Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the March 3, 2020, meeting of your Board of Selectmen. I'd like to call us to order right around 7:00. And I'd like to begin with a pledge of allegiance and ask everybody to please rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would like to move to the approval of the minutes. We have a couple of sets, but I think we'll only approve one tonight if I'm not mistaken, and that would be the minutes of February 27, 2020.
Yes, I've reviewed the minutes, and I would move approval of the minutes from February 27, 2020.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to be recorded as an abstention. I was not in attendance on the 27th. We now move to public comment for items not on the agenda. Hearing none and seeing none, I am going to move to the forecast update. I think as you, as we've talked about in prior meetings, you know, our five-year forecast and the forecast for revenues for the coming fiscal year, FY '21, is an exercise that we undertake, you know, weekly, and then as it gets closer to finalizing budgets, almost daily. And we rely on our town accountant, Sue Nickerson, and our staff in the Board of Selectmen's office, Tom Mayo and Michelle Montseger, to give us, provide us with these numbers that then inform our ability to make allocations for budgetary purposes. So tonight is another installment in that update.
Great.
So forecast update, and then you're gonna kind of, that will-
Flow right into the next presentation.
Right.
Sure. Thank you very much. So, yep, like Selectman Johnson just said, we have a new forecast available, and there are several changes I wanted to highlight so that the board can understand our current position. The first is that we have increased a couple of the projections for local receipts, and that includes the ambulance fees up by another $39,000. That is moving the number up to approximately $1,414,000. The investment income projection, we're moving from $524,000 to $600,000. So those are the two local receipt numbers that we're proposing to move. The next place where we're gonna see a major change in the forecast is the addition of revenue in the form of released excess overlay. So we were recently in a meeting where that resulted in a conversation with the Board of Assessors that, and the town assessor, that basically summarized, it says that we're comfortable releasing upwards of $250,000 from the excess overlay account. The reasons for it are many, but that is a comfortable number. We still have some potential litigation out there, so we don't want to go too far in that release, but we had a lengthy conversation on that, and that's what everybody's comfortable doing.
And maybe just you or Sue could take a minute and tell everybody what the overlay account is.
Sure. The overlay account is the account we use to pay for tax abatements that either private citizens or corporations come to us with. And it's often in the form of a private resident that feels the property assessment from the town was too high. We look at it again and adjust if appropriate, and then their taxes would come down, and we have to have a budgeted amount to offset that cost. Where you run into problems are when you have large organizations in town, large corporations that are very, have a lot of value to their organization, that when you abate that assessment request, even by a small amount, it has a large effect in dollars. So that's why we're always careful with releasing excess overlay.
And all the exemptions, the statutory exemptions that we-
Yep. Oh, right, right. Yep.
Yep. So the next, you know, I'm gonna jump ahead to the last two columns just because the next three are kind of related. So jumping ahead to the last two columns, the other things we did is we, on the group insurance number, we released, or we-
We got the rates-
Lowered our rates.
And we lowered the expected budget.
Okay.
By $50,000. So the GIC rates were coming down more than what we had anticipated, which is great, the cost of the GIC, the general insurance commission's rates, so by $50,000.
But as you explained at one point, that's a little more of a, kind of a sensitive analysis, because we have to take a look at what plans our users are using and make some predictions about migration.
Correct.
And so while we can, while we can free up some of this money, we also need to-
To keep some, just in case people change plans.
Right.
And any new employees.
I was gonna say, given that there are personnel additions, you know, potentially being contemplated, is there, are we okay that there's enough capacity to absorb that? It's usually about 30% of salary?
Yes, it is. I do have a migration amount, depending on how many. I mean, even if we add 10 new employees, all 10 aren't going to have health insurance, going to take health insurance. And that's where you try to balance it, because you don't know whether they're gonna be family, individuals. I do feel confident that we have enough in the migration amount.
Thank you.
The next item, the $12,934, is a, when the capital outlay committee came back with their report, they had been budgeted for $2.5 million. They came back $13,000 short of that number, so we wanted to add that back in. All right, so going back up a little to the town budget level services, and the town budget engineer, and then the education budget level services. What we did here is we backed out the, all of the additional requests from all of the budgets. So what that means is we're back all down at every level to a level service request. So, and you'll see in a minute, for the town, that's a 2.8% increase over prior year. For the school department, that was a 4.4% increase over prior year, and that's now where this new budget lands us, okay? So we backed out $399,896 from the town side, and then we backed out $930,743 from the education, from the education budget. We additionally were looking at, we just made an offer to a new town engineer that came in at about $15,000, less than the budgeted amounts. We were able to see another $15,000 in savings there as well. So those are the numbers there. And then the other item is that the school department, or the school committee, had voted use of the school revolving fund to the tune of $123,828 at their meeting on February 24.
I just clarified, that wasn't voted, that was presented by-
Okay.
-the school administration.
The school administration, okay. So again, that's been backed out of the budget. And what that leaves us with is a, if you remember, at the last forecast presentation, we had a $1.7 million deficit. Now with all these changes, we're looking at a $190,277 surplus, okay? So that leads me in to my path-
Tom, can I just ask a question? I'm not sure if you have this number, but-
Sure.
I know that as, when you were walking me through the local receipts last week, we had a lot of discussion about investment income and the one-time nature of that and the volatility. You had given me a ratio of the fund, of the local receipt as compared to 2019, backing out the investment income?
Yep. So without the investment income, we were up over 90, just about 96% of prior year.
Okay. And I would just point out that it's been our longstanding practice that we typically budget local receipts at about 95% of the last year's actuals. So what we're doing here is we're pushing the local receipts a little. If motor vehicle excise doesn't come in as we're forecasting, you know, the difficulty with local receipts is that there isn't another revenue offset in the budget. So that's where we are.
No, thanks for bringing that up, because I think we made this point one of the last times we met, that we can't guess wrong. Like, we levy our taxes once, so we have got to be very careful about overestimating what we think we can collect in any of these categories, because we can't come back and call you up and say, tell you we're short. So we are trying to push both ends of this. We're trying to make sure that we are not being overzealous in saying, you know, it's raining money in local receipts. On the other hand, we're also trying to make sure, for purposes, you see how tight this budget is, we're also trying to make very sure that every dollar we can find, we're gonna put to work for you. So it's a very careful balance, and it takes a lot of eyes and expertise on the budget to get us to a place where we feel comfortable putting this before town meeting, that this is our ask.
Tom, I just have one question-
Sure.
... with respect to the investment income, which as I understand is interest income.
Yes.
With interest rates dropping, how comfortable are you with?
We are. Our town treasurer has done an analysis, looking at the new rates and the projected rates from here on for the next several months, and we're comfortable with that number.
Okay.
Before Tom goes into kind of a path to balanced budget, I would just say, for the benefit of the viewing audience, that what this is saying, kind of big picture as a town, is that we will be, we will have sufficient revenue that we can keep everything going in the town the way it is right now. And, you know, Karen and I have been at this for a while. There are years when we can't say that. And, you know, I think as we're looking, the first thing we want to kind of do is to say, are we hitting that high watermark where the things we're doing right now can continue to move ahead? And the answer to the community on that is yes, we can.
Thank you. Folks, our seats up in the front, just like church, if you want to come. Thanks for joining us tonight.
Okay, we ready?
I guess I should pause there.
Sure.
We're gonna move into a budget discussion, but if there are any particular questions on the forecast that anybody has, certainly, but we are on the forecast only.
Just the forecast, correct. Ness Corenti, 17 Ward Street, here as a citizen. I am wondering about the forecasting process. I appreciate that we have to be conservative. As an accountant, I get that. I'm looking at the fund balance year to year, and I see it growing, and I know that our town policy is that we stay between 16% and 20%. I'm noticing that in years past, in 2019 being the most recent, that was the published financial statements, that we're at a 30% unassigned general fund. And I'm wondering why that's happening, if that is because we are being too cautious and too conservative? Because I would appreciate using our tax dollars as we are collecting them and not necessarily holding on to them, because we do have the town needs. And looking at people in the audience, I know that people are here for about the schools, but I know that there are other things, like the fire department and senior center. So I really would like to understand that, to make sure that we are using the funds as we're collecting them. And again, I understand that we have to stay within the 16% to 20%, that's good fiscal policy, but we're well over that now.
So there's a number of reasons why that excess fund balance grows, but from a budget perspective, I'll tell you that our annual budget is, for instance, this year, it's tapping out about $117 million. Regularly, we have turnbacks from our departments in excess budget of around a million dollars or so, which, if you do that math, you're looking at an accuracy rate in budgeting of over 99%. So it's difficult to squeeze that tighter, because what if you end up short, right? Now, we only have so much money in our reserve fund, our reserve fund, in order to accommodate shortfalls. So 99-plus percent budgeting certainty or budgeting rate, I think, is pretty high.
Well, and the other thing I would say is, because we've looked at this too, are you getting turnbacks in the same places on a recurring level, so that, to Tom's point, are we, you know, over budgeting in some areas? And Sue can speak to this more particularly, but it really depends on the year. So for instance, this year, and I'm gonna jinx this right now, but, you know, our snow and ice budget hasn't been tapped out like it has been at this point in other years, but that may be not be the case next year. So I guess to be responsive to that, I haven't seen a pattern of predictability to say it would make good budgeting sense to cut our budgets going forward, or to increase the budget in certain ways, to rely on that, on that fund balance or on those turnbacks.
Yeah.
And I think Tom will speak more particularly to your particular question in his presentation.
But I gotta, I'm gonna speak to fund balance a little bit-
Great.
... that I think has a statement in there that you'll appreciate.
Okay. Just because, you know, if I look at to the forecast that you had initially, we had a forecast of $114 million, and just taking 20% of that, our fund balance should be at the $22 million mark. And where I saw it, because this is based on the financial statements, it's at $34 million. So we're at $12 million excess. So I would like to see it used for town purposes as they are being incurred, so maybe we can be smart about how we do that.
Can I just clarify?
Yeah.
That 30% is total fund balance. Our financial policy is 16% to 20% of unassigned fund balance.
I think in the financial statements, it says it's at 29.9% of the unassigned-
We're not gonna get into this at this point.
No, okay.
But, thank you.
I'm just, this is just based on the financial statements.
Yep. Okay. But I don't know whether you want to add a little more color on that. Within fund balance, there are categories of fund balance where dollars are assigned and essentially encumbered for particular purposes. So there's a smaller number that is discretionary spending within fund balance. So mooring permits or whatever have to be used for, you know, marine-related or harbor-related expenses. So, yeah, we can spend it, but we can only spend it for certain purposes.
I'd also just comment, and I think Tom will get to this, that our town financial policy, which is developed by the advisory committee, speaks to how any excess fund balance should be used. That was something that the advisory committee worked on quite a bit as, over the years, and it's reviewed every three years.
Okay.
Okay. Ready?
Any further questions on just the forecast? Okay.
Okay, so this is, as it's titled, this is just a path forward to a balanced budget, not necessarily the path, it's a path. Adcom will be taking that up in future meetings, starting, I believe, Thursday, they'll start those conversations. So I just wanted to stress that. So what I'm doing in this presentation is highlighting the additional requests that I'm leaving in my budget requests that are gonna end up before you tonight. All right. So just a little history, as we walk through the process that we've been through so far to date. My original recommended budget included a total of a 4.2% increase. That's over and above the, so the 2.8% level services, level services budget, excuse me, level services budget would have been 2.8%. My original TA recommended budget, which included the additional request, was up to 4.2%.
So that's not 4.2 over the 2.8?
No, it's not, it's not over the 2.8, sorry. The additional requests, in total departmental requests when they first came in, were $467,000. I trimmed those by the bottom box, by those three categories, to just under $400,000 before presenting them to the board. So I have several deferrals that I am not recommending tonight in your, for your consideration in the balanced budget. The first are, the first column highlights most of the, excuse me, all of the deferred, full deferred items that had been recommended by me in the first round of budget presentations. So those include some items for the harbor master, a firefighter, and a police officer, some legal services, an attempt at backfilling some of that structural deficit, et cetera. So I am now removing all of those from my recommended balanced budget for you. I'm further reducing my ultimate recommendations on the next page, I'm further reducing two items within that category by $50,730. So the GIS coordinator that I'm recommending to you, if you remember in the initial conversations, a lot of those, a lot of the funds that are going to be, in essence, you think of them as earmarked for the GIS coordinator and the procurement position, were funds that were absorbed by the former engineering department elsewhere. So those, the total for those two positions, which were $78,000 apiece, came down to $21,620 apiece after that absorption elsewhere in the budget. I'm further reducing the GIS coordinator from the $21,620 down by $20,000 to a total of $1,620 by offsetting a portion of that salary cost using the water enterprise fund. And we see that in our budget for the water.
We think that's fair.
Yeah, and the budget that we took action on the other night reflects that.
It was in there. That's right.
It's actually by having, this is a cost savings to everybody, including the water system, because instead of everybody getting their own GIS resources-
Right.
... we're sharing one resource, so that the cost for all the, for everybody's a little bit less.
And the other reduction I have is an IT director. If you'll remember, when I first presented this, I was asking for a six-month overlap with our outgoing or retiring IT director. In large part, I had some fears about a failed initial process and then the need to renew it and make sure that we get a good quality candidate that can then be, that can then shadow our existing IT director, so we have smooth service transition upon his retirement. In retrospect, I'm far more comfortable with the process than I was at the beginning, at the beginning of this analysis, because I believe that we're gonna be able to get that procurement, not procurement, that hiring process in place prior to the three-month window starting, or a three-month window starting from his retirement.
Gotcha.
So, whereas before, I wasn't quite sure that we were gonna be able to get that done. Now I think we will.
Okay.
And that would allow us to hire this person, have them a full three-month overlap with the existing director, which is really all I ever wanted. I was just fearful that if something failed along the way, we were gonna end up with less time than that.
Yep. And it's a critical position for the town.
It's a critical position.
We can't afford to wreck.
That transition has to go smoothly. So if you flip to the next page, you'll see a table with my total, that summarizes my total, oh, sorry, my total final requests that are before you in your recommended budget, balanced budget for tonight. So I just explained the procurement and GIS coordinator positions. That's two positions at $78,000 apiece that will be, that we would be able to hire for a grand total of $23,000 new dollars in the budget. Some uniforms for building inspectors to make them identifiable when they're visiting people's homes or out in the public in general. Eileen has some additional election expenses. I just talked about the IT director and the three-month transition down from a six-month transition. The emergency response expenses for a fire, this is helping to plan for emergency responses. Some monuments, identifying and improving monuments across the town. This is a five-year window of recurring costs. And then a part-time town hall custodian, that the hope was that they would be able to offset some of the stress on the existing team and by helping get, spend a little more time down in the senior center than what our existing team is able to do. They have to do a lot on their own.
Yep.
And by having this person, I think that will take some stress off of their staffing.
Yep.
So that brings us to a grand total, new sub, no, excuse me, a new grand total additional requests on the town side of $87,966 over the level service budget request. That moves our total budget increase over last year to 3.08%. Now, just a couple of slides on fund balance, and this speaks to a little bit of what Ms. Corenti was speaking to. If we look at the history of how fund balance was used to balance the budget, this is an annual issue, I think, that Adcom faces and attempts to deal with. If we look back at a few of these years, you can see that on occasion, it's used to, in different ways, to balance the budget. The big ones, of course, were very specific targeted approaches in '17 and '18. But, you know, in prior years, there had been some fund balance used to get the budget fully balanced. The danger in doing that is that you're building a hole in the next year if it's not applied properly. So I'm just gonna read this segment from the town financial policy, just so everyone can, so it can resonate with everyone. This is from the town's formal financial policy. When unassigned fund balance exceeds 20% for a sustained period and is projected to remain in the range of 16% to 20% for the next five years, the advisory committee should consider recommending that town meeting apply such amounts in excess of 20% to items such as unfunded long-term liabilities, long-term and nonrecurring, nonrecurring capital expenditures, retirement of debt, or targeted tax relief. Excess unassigned fund balance should not be used to fund recurring operating budget items. That would, if that were to happen, that would create an immediate hole in the following year's budget.
I just want to comment on the two big years there, because I was on Adcom, I was on this board for both of them, because there were some extraordinary circumstances. Right as the fiscal year '17 budget was coming to a conclusion, we found that the library roof and HVAC system had to be replaced, and that was a pretty immediate need. If we had taken that out of the capital outlay budget, it would have eaten up about half the capital outlay budget, which would have put us in a hole there. So a collective decision was made that, or actually, that was put forward for town meetings consideration, and town meetings said yes. In FY '18, the town received building permit fees for an additional structure at Linden Ponds and one of the projects at the shipyard. Now, we knew that in the next year, we were going to see new growth in that same amount, and that in the following year, that revenue would go into the tax base. So what we saw there was applying building permit fees, as Tom said, we weren't really creating a hole, because the revenue pie was growing, and that was gonna become a permanent part of the tax base. So those were two exceptions that I think bear a little explanation.
And my recollection was, we had some certainty or line of sight to the actual completion of those projects.
Well, the building permit, yeah, what happened is, we actually received the building permit revenue. And we also, we adopted that money out of fund balance, because the projects were sufficiently completed that we knew that the new growth would come online.
Because the, because we've been cautious.
They had been far enough along.
Right.
That's right. And we were, I think with one of them, we were like, you know, within a couple weeks of issuing the certificate of occupancy. So the risks, we knew the tax base would grow and saw that as a way to bridge, if you will.
Because without that certainty, sometimes building permits get pulled, and so you have building permit fees, but that, the building permit fees don't turn into new growth, because there's not sufficient activity on the project. So it doesn't always line up the way these particularly line up.
Yeah.
And for significant dollars. I'm gonna just pause right here to say, there are a few seats-
Can we get more chairs?
And why don't we see if we can-
Call to order.
Pardon me?
Does Michelle need to call the order?
Michelle, do you need to call your group to order here?
No, we don't have a floor.
Okay.
You do.
Oh, we do. Oh, hello, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, and I could call, I was going to call to order the HAM School Committee meeting of March 3 to join the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. So can we reflect that in the minutes? The school committee has called to order its meeting at 7:30.
Thank you.
Thank you. And let's get some chairs in here, so folks can sit.
I'll get them from, maybe, check out, yeah.
Is Adcom's meeting over there, right?
Their meeting, I don't know who's in there.
Okay.
Michelle, would you mind checking?
Yeah. Do I go get some?
I'm with you.
Okay. Sorry.
That's all right. We have one page left.
Okay.
One slide left. Just another couple of comments about fund balance. So fund balance is often used to fund warrant articles. This is beyond the budget expenses on an annual basis. Last year, we spent approximately a little under $1 million from fund balance on warrant articles, and this year, we're proposing $568,600 to fund proposed warrant articles. Just another point is, we are, remember, every year, we have to add $700,000 to fund balance in order to maintain that ratio, the 16 to 20% of fund balance. So that's out there. And then, just to remind everyone, in recent years, our budget surplus, that we were talking about earlier, that approximate $1 million in the annual budget surplus often is used, and we see that that offsets that number.
And we can't count on that.
Can't count it.
But we can't count on that.
That's right. So the last comment I'll make is, and again, I'll read this because it's important, but significant changes, particularly ones that conflict with our own, with our town financial policy, get the attention of the rating agencies. Maintaining our AAA bond rating as the town embarks on a period of significant capital investment is of paramount importance, and we are coming up to one of those, one of those positions, or at times, in our history, in the near future. We will have some significant expenditures. We know of several of them on the horizon, and we need to protect, we need to protect that money, and that, excuse me, that agent, that rating, the AAA bond rating.
And, you know, our credit rating does two things for- And, you know, our credit rating does two things for us. First of all, it gives us, I, I see you ma'am, and I will call on you in just a second. It does two things for us. First of all, it gives us access to the capital markets in a way that other towns don't enjoy. And secondly, it gives us access to the capital markets at interest rates that are incredibly, incredibly economical for us. So, you know, I remember when I was on AdCom and we were struggling to balance the budget in the wake of the recession, you know, one of the questions that came up was, well, how important is it to maintain that AAA credit rating? And the answer to that was incredibly important. There were municipalities during that period of time that couldn't borrow. And, you know, our hard work, our united hard work by all of the town and town meeting to stay the course and to continue, I think, the financial stewardship of this town has made it possible for us to now enjoy the borrowing rates that have returned, I think, significant dollars back to the citizens, citizens of Hingham.
Yeah. And just to jump in, I mean, interestingly, I was going to tell you guys about this in my report, but it might be kind of timely. Today, Tom, Sue and I and some others were on a call with the town financial advisors, which is something we do periodically. We were discussing some, you know, refinancing options as well as some rollover of debt. And one of the things that our financial advisor said is the town's, the town's AAA bond rating is based on a number of things. And actually, the amount of debt we're carrying only accounts for about 10% of the rating. 30% of the rating is the overall management of the town. 30% are institutional factors. And actually, Janet Morley from Capital Markets talked about the fact that you have a town financial policy, the fact that you follow it, the fact that you have a strong fund balance, the fact that you contribute to OPEB. Talked about how all those things actually really account for about two-thirds of the AAA bond rating. So while the rating agencies, you know, they, they look at all the financial metrics, but they're also looking at management and, and the, the institution. And so it's the way we budget, it's the financial policy, it's the advisory committee. May I just, could I ask a question about this before you open up to the audience?
Yeah. So just so everyone knows, we got a full crowd here tonight, and we will entertain questions for sure. The way this typically happens is we all talk up here, we ask our questions, and then I'll open it up to you. So I haven't forgotten about you, but we'll talk here first, and then we'll, we'll get to your questions.
Tom, thank you. This is, this is great work. I'm just going back to page three, which are the $311,000 worth of initiatives that you've taken off the table. Not easy to do. I guess what I would say, particularly with respect to two public safety personnel, are, are you okay? I mean, just so people know, any point in time in Hingham, we have 13 firefighters taking care of the whole town. We have a shift of police officers, I don't know, 17, 18 on a shift, including the officers. Are, are we okay with this? Are we okay with, with, with the deferrals?
So I've spoken with both chiefs. They put forward these positions for a reason. They felt they, that they felt that their, their departments were better served with this additional position. I've talked with both of them about the cuts. While unfortunate, they understand the budgeting realities and, and are willing to, to deal with it. I think in many ways, we're, we're going to see the effect of this in the overtime, the overtime budgets of those two departments.
Glenn, did you have something?
Yeah, a normal shift runs anywhere from seven to eight officers on the road.
Okay, seven, eight officers.
Seven officers on the road, seven to 10.
Okay.
But then you've got folks in.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Tom, the public information officer, which is something that, that we've talked about, if, if that position isn't funded, does that work not happen? Is somebody picking up that work? What?
Yeah. So it falls to, in large part, to Michelle and myself. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll do it because it's what our, it's what the job is. The attempt that the, at, at bringing this position in was to let the world know of the good work that's happening in the town and making sure that the townspeople were getting, were getting a good representation of the, of the work their government is doing on their behalf. You know, and there are other things. For instance, we're dealing now with, with a potential disease outbreak. And it's helpful to have these professionals in place to help communicate the appropriate message to the public. But Michelle and I have resources at our, at our, at our fingertips that we can use, and it just takes more time.
I'd also note that public record requests, which we have a statutory requirement to follow through on within a certain day period, can often cripple an office.
Yes.
And we have no choice. We have to drop everything to deal with those.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Karen.
I mean, I, I think to follow up on the firefighter and police officer hiring, I think the thing that worries me about putting this off is the, is the amount of time it takes to actually onboard an officer to get, to get them on a shift. So, you know, taking it out of the budget this year really puts us back 18 months, two years, something like that, to, to get somebody in and trained and through the academy. So the hiring process, I think, the timeline for hiring is very challenging for those two, for those two departments in particular. So.
Yes.
You know, I, I know we've got to get to this, but it's, it's just, it's, it is troubling to me. You know, the legal services cut, I think we have been, you know, have been and continue to try to manage our, our legal service resources. I think we have very fine representation. I think we get every dollar and then some out of those folks. But, you know, we're a $100 million highly regulated enterprise with, with personnel and procurement rules and public, you know, open meeting law rules that we have to follow, and we need, you know, we need the advice of council to deal with that. So, I mean, to be honest, when you put together your ask, they seem, they seem like, like not much more than level services.
Yeah. You know, and I, I would say, I mean, by no means are taking these off the table easy to do. We have people in this building who are overworked. I worry about burnout. I look at the demands in particular on public safety, the continued increase in the number of calls, the complexity of calls, both in terms of emergency management and police. I also look at the fact that we run an ambulance service that brings in local receipt dollars to the town. And oftentimes, when we get multiple calls, we have to rely on one of our neighboring communities for mutual aid, and that's a lost revenue opportunity. So I, I know these, I know that taking these off the table, I, I understand we're kind of calling them cuts, but there's part of me that says, you can't cut something you didn't have. But I would say that I understand that deferring these items is not easy.
Yep.
It doesn't say they're not important. But I appreciate your doing that with an eye towards closing a, you know, a path to a balanced budget.
Yeah. I mean, I see my, this time of year is tough. I see my job as, as being able to provide the services the town requires. So this is an effort at doing that, doing it in a fiscally responsible manner.
Tom, can, can you say something about the senior center outreach coordinator?
Sure.
Because I know that's something that the folks at the senior center have been looking forward to. That's a community that we need to serve.
Yep.
The budget there is very low.
Yes.
And we're deferring that.
We are. I, I had deferred this in my initial round, not because it wasn't an important addition to that department, but because I needed to have a better understanding of what the necessary staffing of that department was and felt I needed more time to get there. This is something that the Council on Aging and the, our COA director, our Director of Elder Services has been advocating for very strongly for the last year, as they should. And that, I believe that's what I said when they came in and presented, that that was their role to do that. It's an important position. It's just, I just didn't think it was ready yet, so that's why I was willing to pull it back. You're going to see this in the next year or two, probably next year, because it's that important. We have a, we have a growing senior population that thankfully is starting to use our senior center services more often. And that's what we want. And in order to do that successfully, we need to make sure it's coordinated properly. So it's an important position, one that I wholeheartedly back. I just need, I need to, I have a little bit more of the warm fuzzies around what the full needs of the department were before I recommended it.
You'll be hearing from me next year to make sure.
Well, and, and, you know, Joe, four years ago, four years ago, the, the Director of the Council on Aging at that time wanted to put forward a new initiative. And, you know, we, what we typically try to do when someone has a new initiative is to say, is there any way you can fund that new initiative within your budget? And, you know, can you find a way to do that? And so actually, four years ago, the outreach coordinator position was eliminated because there was a, there was a greater need. I would just also mention that I, I think we've probably gotten 20 letters on this.
Yep.
I think we had a petition that was signed by 75 or 100 people. And it is, it is hard to say no to a worthy request, especially when the senior center budget as, on a whole is, I don't know, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Further questions, Joe? Any further questions?
No, thank you.
Well, again, I appreciate all of your work to get us here. And as Mary and Joe have said, none of this is easy, and, you know, none of these requests were easy to, easy to prioritize. But I think that, you know, I think the bang for the buck in what you've put forward and your ability also to utilize resources where they are available, you know, I think shows. You know, to be able to add a GIS coordinator, combination of kind of reevaluating engineering function expenses as well as the water company enterprise, and to be able to establish some synergy, both economically and operationally, I think, you know, for $1,600, that's a, that's a, a big resource add to the town, I think.
Sure is.
Yeah. Okay. So questions from the public on this presentation from Tom. So let's be clear that we haven't voted yet. This is, you know, kind of like what happens with the schools. The administration or staff has a presentation about, here's one way to get to a balanced budget, and we will continue to talk about it before we vote it. But I'd welcome some comments from the audience before we get to that spot. If, if folks, yes, ma'am. If you could just tell us your name and address for the record, that'd be great.
Kim Johnson for Heather Lane. So I have a clarifying question on that fund slide. I am a, this is my first budget meeting, and this is not my forte, so I have a very simple mind in terms of trying to understand this. So what I'm understanding the fund balance to be is that if there is excess money in the fund, we can use it on one-time big expenses for our town. Is that correct?
So what the fund balance specifically refers to is unfunded long-term liabilities.
What does that mean?
So.
And I'm not saying that to be, I'm literally asking what that means.
Like pension, pension, yep, retiree healthcare.
Yep, got it. Okay.
Long-term and non-recurring capital expenditures, i.e. the library roof.
Yep, okay.
Foster School.
Yep, okay. So I was a little bit confused then on the building permit conversation. So did we, did we use money from the fund to pay the building permits for Linden Ponds and Shipyard in expectation that we'd get money back? Okay, I was confused by that.
So what, so what happened, so what happens is, first of all, just really super big picture, fund balance is our rainy day fund. You know how, you know, they say that all of our households should have a couple of months of living expenses in the event of a rainy day. Municipalities have that too. And what they essentially do is they say, if you look at your annual budget, you should have a certain percentage of that set aside so that if local receipts don't come in, or if the governor cuts local aid in the middle of the year, which can happen, we're not, we're not stuck being able, you know, we, we can still pay the bills. So basically, what, so the fund balance is a rainy day fund. So we try to build that up. And so in fiscal year 18, we had a fund balance, I'm not sure of the number, but let's call it $10 million. We took $837,000 of that and said, we're going to move that over into the operating budget to pay some of our bills, salaries and all this other stuff, because we knew that in fiscal 19, when those projects opened, the tax base was going to grow by $837,000. What we don't want to do with fund balance is if we take something out that's a recurring expense, we don't want to be in a situation where we have to fund it every year, because then we're pulling money out of our fund balance every year. Karen was on the advisory committee when that had been happening in the town. Our fund balance was down to 9%. We were put on credit watch, and that was right around the time we were trying to borrow money to build East School. So that money was money we had in the bank. We took it out to, because we knew that in the next year, the tax base would grow.
Great, understood. Thank you. One last question, and I'll sit down. So how, when there is kind of money beyond the standard rainy day fund, right, we want to have a, right, like they say, you should have six months of salary in your bank at all times, right? So if I was a town and I had 12 months of salary in the bank instead of six months, how do we as a town decide to use the, the excess six months that we have?
Right. So that's that down at that box in the bottom of the slide. So a couple years ago, several years ago, when the town got in that situation, the advisory committee, they're, they're our finance committee, 15 of our fellow citizens, they're meeting next door. They basically are responsible for putting together a town financial policy. They look at communities in Massachusetts, they look at AAA communities, and they basically put together that policy you see that says, if we have that extra, how do we use it? And basically, as Mr. Mayo was saying, that's things like unfunded pension or our OPEB liability, long-term and non-recurring capital, or potential, retirement of debt or tax relief. This board has been talking a little bit, nothing formal, but knowing that we have a lot of capital projects on the horizon, particularly Foster School, wouldn't it be great if when we're asking the taxpayers of Hingham, we're going to have to ask for a tax increase for Foster School, wouldn't it be great if we could say, look, we've, we've got this school project, I don't know, it's $50 million. The state's going to kick in some, and we've got a couple millions of, million dollars of fund balance that we can use to sort of ease the pain a little bit. That would be an example of using it to a long-term capital project. And we have several of those on the horizon right now as a town.
Right, thank you.
Mary, if I can just follow up on that question, because I thought I understood, maybe I don't. Getting back to the building permit fees, those are not recurring fees. That's a one-time building permit.
That's right. That's correct.
But you're talking about increase in real estate taxes associated with that.
That's correct.
And so the 837, does that represent our projected income from real estate tax, or the actual building permit fees that came in?
It was the application of excess building permit fee that was equivalent to the real estate taxes in the next year.
Okay.
So, so we, we budget using some building permit fees, and when we don't, when we get more in, we put it in fund balance. It drops to fund balance.
Great.
And just to be clarified, we use that 837 for capital outlay?
Yep.
Not for operating budget?
Long-term. Got it.
Okay.
Yep, that, that's a good clarification. Did everybody hear that? So that 837 was applied for capital outlay, which falls within the financial policy to say it's a one-time, non-recurring expense. That's important clarification. Thanks, Sue. Further questions on the, on Tom's presentation on the, on the path to the balanced budget, or a path to the balanced budget? Okay. So we have, we have your priorities, as you've recommended them. We are carrying right now a level service funded number for the schools that represents the status quo budget that was presented to the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And it includes that the level services ask from the schools that's included in the forecast includes this, this offset of the 123, 828. That's where that savings will be, will be reflected.
Yes.
Right, okay.
That's the revolving fund.
That's the revolving fund. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So if we were to vote this number, if we were to vote this as-is, the forecast shows a surplus of $190,277. Tom has presented us with priorities that if we funded, if you can go to page four, maybe, Tom? If we were to fund some of the town priorities, we could recommend, and we could recommend from other parts, but we could recommend a budget that would increase by this 87. from other parts, but we could recommend a budget that would increase by this 87,966. And those would then fund the town administrators' priorities for FY '21. Is that a fair statement, Tom?
Yes.
And then it would leave a balance of, what, like a little...
102,311.
Okay. That could be allocated to the schools. That's one way to get, so then the number at the bottom of the page would be zero.
The number at the bottom, yep.
Right.
And that assumes that capital stays...
At...
Right.
Right.
One of the things, I've got a lot of papers in front of me, I would just point out, and I think I sent it around today, but for the first time this, for the first time in a while, capital outlay was unable to fund all of what it calls Priority One projects.
Yes.
Most notably, an ambulance and three or four other projects. It was a total of about $450,000. I'm not sure with this kind of surplus, if there's enough there to put anything over to capital, but I, I guess the way I always look at it is if we're going to, if we're going to look at applying a surplus, there's kind of three legs to the stool, with capital being one of them.
Yep. And the thing with not funding the ambulance, right, is it is a capital expense, but it's also a revenue generator.
Right.
I just, I guess I wonder, I hear you about the three legs of the stool, I just wonder at this number...
I don't think it's, I think if we gave, if capital got a portion of that, I'm not sure that it would be significant enough to sort of do anything.
Right, right. But I think it's a good point to understand that we typically try to fund our, all of our Priority One projects for the fiscal year.
Well, and I think, you know, big or small, we, capital should be part of the, I agree with you, but I think they should be part of the conversation.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
And I think we vetted the capital last meeting, and we were pretty clear that this was not a safety risk.
With the ambulance?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I don't know if either one of you have a preferred route to this, you know, so I guess to make clear for the audience too, we vote this budget tonight, this is the budget we recommend to the advisory committee, which, as Mary said, is the finance committee for the town. It's really then the advisory committee's job to review essentially our recommendation to them. They are the entity that actually recommends the Budget to Town Meeting. So our vote on this is, again, an advisory, a recommendation to the advisory committee that these would be the priorities coming from the Board of Selectmen. And then they have to factor those in, I think, to their deliberations, including a deliberation as to whether and when and where to apply any of the unassigned, the excess unassigned fund balance. So, again, I don't know whether you are ready to move forward and whether, you know, what has ended up happening the last couple of years is we've made recommendations, and then they've voted their budget, which is, has been different than ours, and we've had to come back and revote.
So, I mean, philosophically, I think we have a responsibility to vote. I think the people that elected us expect us to make tough choices and to be fiscally responsible. And if I were, if I didn't vote tonight, I don't think I'd be doing my job. I think we always understand that it's the advisory committee's recommendations that are there, but I also think that it's an opportunity to inform the advisory committee. And moreover, I think it's also an opportunity for us to lend our support to Tom's recommendations, which I think is important, because in the municipal budget, we don't have the ability to move money around. So, you know, we, if the advisory committee votes a number, we can't say, hey, can we take $30,000 and move it from here to there? So to me, this is, you know, this is important to do.
Yep. No, and I was, you know, I was sort of starting out today thinking, you know, I don't want to step on the advisory committee's toes, because I do think it is their budget to craft. But it is important to me, particularly with the municipal priorities, that we, that we put forward a budget to them that establishes our support of those, you know, to the extent we do, of those priorities.
Well, and, you know, as the people who are responsible for setting the financial guidelines for the town with, you know, all the money.
I mean, I think that the town administrator has made a compelling case for the, it's about $88,000 more, and the remaining 102, 311, from what I've heard from the schools, I would want to have the money go there. It's, this is, this is a tight budget. Putting it all there brings us to zero. And I recognize the risks, but I think we do a vote of confidence, both to the town administrator and also to the schools, by going that route.
I'm comfortable with that approach.
I have a couple thoughts about the budget, but I also don't know. I mean, I see, and thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. It's...
I know, it's nice to...
It's, I don't, you know, maybe before we deliberate and talk any further, if you're inclined, if there are people in the audience who have anything to say, I'd like to, if people are, come and want to say something, I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, 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 absolutely.
Before you go, I would just caution that, to the extent that I said money to the schools, I'm not picking an item within the school budget, that's not our purview.
Yep.
So that's not the type of discussion that I think we should be having.
Yep, I agree with that. Yes, ma'am. Name and address, if you could, for the record.
Leslie Whitman, One Rocky Run. So I just want to start by thanking you guys. I understand this is a really complicated process, and your first initial reaction to put the money towards the schools is, great news. I just want to speak on behalf of parents to say that I know there's a lot of chatter about the need to fully fund schools, and, you know, there's a long history of being really financially conservative in this town, which we recognize, but I think the feeling is that we're not asking for anything beyond what your kids had when they went to schools here. We're not asking to be Wellesley with a $25,000 budget per student, you know, and I know you guys have heard what has been written up in op-eds about Hingham kids having the lowest spend per pupil across our 20 benchmarks town, 20 benchmarks town, benchmark towns. And that just, that feels wrong to me. I mean, Hingham strives to be, you know, certainly number one in our sports and academics and so many things, and I know that we try to be sort of middle of the range with salaries and budgets for, you know, various things in the town, but this feels like a major shortfall for our kids. And I also just want to add that investing in kids is not something that I just look for my own children and my neighbors' kids, that there's been a lot of economics around this recently, that investing in children is something that actually gets paid back completely, and then some, over the long term. It's not just that, you know, I mean, this speaks more to disadvantaged children from the studies that I've read, but I know it's probably true, you know, across the board in a town like ours, that when you put money in, you get kids that, you know, go on to be productive members of society in the long run, and they don't just not need assistance from government in the future, but they actually pay taxes in the future, and they provide benefit. And I'm only 10 years in this town, I grew up outside of Newark, but from what I understand, a lot of kids grow up here, and they go to school around here, and they move back, because it's a great place to raise kids. And I hope my kids, I plan to stay, and I hope my kids do move back. But, so we know a lot of these kids that are being raised here and educated here are going to come back and be members of our town and society. And I just want to make a push to, let's look beyond just this, you know, hundred-some-thousand dollars that we're talking about. I mean, we are so far off the mark, we're lower than the state average for spend per pupil. And I just, I want us to be creative and looking at other ways, if it's, you know, an override that's necessary. And I know I wrote to Mrs. Power about this, that we don't want to risk foster in the future, but at the same time, this feels like, you know, talking about rainy day fund, it feels like our roof is, needs to be repaired, and our furnace is going, and our, you know, cracks in the chimney that need to be replaced. I'm sorry that it's all coming up at once, but it just feels like we haven't had the increases in the past to keep up with things that our kids need in terms of technology and social, social emotional needs, that, you know, they're growing at a faster rate than what we can provide, this two, two and a half percent increase that allows for this 4.4% increase in the budget that basically just covers the teacher salary increases, which obviously we support more than anything else. But, so, you know, the rate of need and growth in terms of expenditures has to increase, I think, at a steeper rate than what the town is supposed to increase our taxes at. So that sometimes calls for an override. I mean, I, I just am sitting here listening, I didn't know about these things with the police officer and the firefighters, and I'm sure there's, you know, 10 other things you guys could tick off that are super important to this town. And sometimes, you know, you reach that point in your own family where you say, I don't have enough money right now, I have to figure out a way to increase my revenues, and I don't know if an override is the only thing to do that, because you make it clear from our financial policy that we can't, you know, dig into that money for other things than what you listed. So I don't know what the other options are, but I just want to voice support for the schools and all these other really important items, and if that's an override, you know, we put it out to the town to see if that's what's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comments, and, you know, I think you have hit the nail on the head, and Mary's made this presentation in the past, that, you know, our expenditures are growing faster than our levy can grow. You know, I think it was probably a month, three weeks ago, that we talked altogether downstairs about this same topic, and, you know, a number of folks raised concerns about growing the revenue side of the pie. You know, I guess I'll say a couple of things. I think, I think an override conversation is a conversation that, that if the town's going to undertake it, you know, needs to happen with the guidance of our financial advisors, it needs to be a holistic conversation, and it needs to, it needs to understand, I think, the changes in the capital infrastructure in the town, and what that may do to revenue needs. So I think it's a really complicated discussion, and I also think it's one of those discussions that, you know, we have once and not again in a good, long time. So whatever we do, whatever reset we might want to undertake, I think that's going to be a complex conversation, and, you know, for folks to have, you know, potentially sooner rather than later, to plan around, as Mary's indicated, you know, changes, significant, hopefully significant changes in the capital assets of the town. So that's one. Two, we said at this meeting again, like, three weeks ago, you know, we do actually a lot of work that you don't see on TV, and we are continually trying to look at other revenue sources that we can tap into, so that the town can grow the pie without an inordinate burden on our tax base. We are unlike, so when you kind of compare across towns, we don't have that significant commercial tax base that other towns have, so that when there are tax increases, or if there's a dual rate in place where commercial, you know, commercial rates could be raised in a way that generates significant funds, we've got like between 8 and 11% commercial properties in town, and many of those, as you know, are small businesses that we, that we want, and we want to thrive in our square. So we don't want to overburden our commercial taxpayers, and we don't, we don't want to overburden our taxpayers as a whole. So, you know, we have looked, again, we talked about this last time, we've looked at South Hingham, the South Hingham Study Group had produced a, just a great report that talked about incremental change up there, but also the ramifications of change in that corridor. You know better than anybody else, right? It's a very busy area of town, and there are neighborhoods up there that need to be taken account of as we think about light commercial development in that sector of the town. So, you know, we're coming at this from a variety of angles, and a lot of it's sort of not ready for prime time, but it's discussions Joe's been having, I've been having, Mary's been having, to try to grow the pie sooner rather than later, without necessarily relying on just the tax base, which would be the effect of an override.
And, you know, I'd just add one other thing, you know, what we're doing here tonight is something that a lot of us do, and it's always the challenge, is what's that right balance for everybody? Because, you know, in just reading some of the report from the Master Plan Committee and different things, there are a lot of your fellow citizens that really do not want to see any more development in this town. There has been sharp opposition to doing anything in South Hingham, and a lot of it is coming from people who have called that part of our town home for a very long time and don't want to see that disrupted. And so, you know, as we're looking at this, we try to listen to what everybody has to say, but it's really kind of trying to find that right balance of revenue and services and maintaining the essence of Hingham. And as Karen said, we try to approach it in a lot of, a lot of different ways.
And I guess the other thing I would say is, you know, within our pie, and I know this maybe isn't exactly what you want to hear, but within our pie, I think we do do everything we can to try to allocate as much as we can to the school budget. So, you know, the school budget bottom line is a little over $56 million, but that doesn't include capital that gets allocated to the school, and it doesn't include expenses that are carried on kind of the town-wide side of the budget, like benefits, like employee benefits. So, you know, total school support by the town of Hingham to its schools, I would argue, within its pie, is pretty significant.
I've got that number.
Mary has the number.
No, because, I mean, it's interesting, I mean, and, no, and in preparation for this, we've all given this a lot of thought, and, I mean, I have some things written down because...
Because that's what you do.
Because that's the way I do it. A couple, a couple weeks ago, the advisory committee actually asked our town accountant to say, let's break out some of these, what we call shared costs, the benefits, the debt service, the other things. 65 cents of every dollar spent in Hingham goes to support education. And if you look over the last 10 years, the municipal budget has been growing on average by about, I think it's about 2.8%, and the school budget on average has been growing by about 4.2%. And I understand and accept that there are some in the audience who feel that that's not a satisfactory funding level. At the same time, I would offer up that nearly two-thirds of everything we have is being put into our education system, which I hope speaks to the collective support of public education in this community.
Yep. Further, yes, ma'am. Name and address, if you could, for the record.
Lauren Tevala, 98 Black Rock Drive. I appreciate all of your explanation. Just speaking to the overage, basically what everybody's talking about here, I would just say, in terms of reoccurring costs, the things that are needed at the school tactically are not necessarily reoccurring, and my son's a pupil at Plymouth River School, the windows are an issue. There's a lot of things that wouldn't be accounted for in the budget that you're speaking to now in terms of the 65 cents on the dollar, really wouldn't. You know, old buildings, these type of things, but Leslie mentioned, it really is something that, we have this money, and it's the taxpayers' money, that we've all been paying towards the town, we really want to see it being used in a way visually that, like, will help every single day, whether it's the senior center or the schools. Let's think about the schools, though.
Yep.
So weeks ago, this board actually did vote to support a statement of interest for Plymouth River School. And by making that vote, we actually committed that if the town was accepted into that program, that we would complete that project within 18 months, and the town's share of that is $1 million. I'd also point out, and I've got a former colleague in the room, Paul Healy and I, a few years ago, when the town received $1 million in mitigation funds for the development that's going up on Beale Street, we actually directed that that money go to the Plymouth River School windows, because we are well aware that there are facility needs across the town in a lot of different places. And so we are taking a lot of different actions to try to address, you know, many, many of those facility needs, both the operating expenses as well as the capital.
And then, you know, the other thing I guess I'd just point out is, and I think it's page six of your presentation, so town meetings ask to approve, you know, the numbers within the budget, within the fiscal year budget, but we're also asked to approve a bunch of requests for money in individual warrant articles. Some of them are town-specific, some of them are school-specific, they're all for us, right? And so those have to get paid, paid somewhere. And sometimes, and I don't know whether you've tuned in to other meetings, but other folks have said what you're all saying tonight, well, we have this money here, we can spend it at the harbor, right, Bill Riordan, or, you know, we can spend it at the country club, or we can spend it, you know, pick your cohort, everybody has their priority. And so everybody in town is asking for some of that, some share of that money. And the complexity of that, right, is that, you know, between the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee, those priorities have to be balanced, and they have to be ordered, and they have... have to be ordered, and they have to fit within the financial policy. So, the other dynamic that we have been working on collectively is, okay, if we have this half million dollars plus that we're going to ask town meeting to support, because they're all priorities and projects that we also really need to do, how are we going to pay for those? And so, we pay for them in a couple ways, right? So long as they're in keeping with the financial policy, maybe we do allocate some of the unassigned fund balance to offset the cost of the warrant article request. Or maybe we borrow. And we borrow at these great rates because we're a AAA community. But that, guess what? That increases the debt service line item in your budget. So you got to pay for that somewhere. So, you know, I hear you. And I guess the other thing is, it's just, I'm a public school girl, right? Like, I, just like the rest of us up here, we are fully supportive of our public school system. And I, it breaks my heart, frankly, to not be able to fund the schools with all of the very important requests. It also breaks my heart not to fund a firefighter, and not to fund a police officer, and not to fund the senior center coordinator. And like Mary said, I mean, you elected us to try to do this job in the best interest of the town with the money that we have. And that's what we're doing tonight. And I appreciate you coming out tonight, and I appreciate you sharing these thoughts. And I hate being the one to sit in the seat and say, "This is all we have, and this is how, you know, this is what we have, and we think this is a fair allocation of those resources." And that's unfortunately, tonight, the position, you know, that we're in. And I think we're trying to do the best we can with the dollars that we have. Megan, name an address for the record, please.
Megan Buer, 489 Main Street. I just have a question. You said we spend about 65% of our budget on the schools. What do our benchmark towns spend? What do the other towns spend?
I don't know the answer to that.
That might be a more useful number than just what we spend comparing to the benchmark towns, because that's why we consider them benchmark towns. I also want to say, I mean, one of the things that I think we all like about Hingham is that we really think things through. But as we're thinking through how to fix this problem in a way that will take years and years and years, kids are only kids for a very short period of time. I feel like maybe we need to consider a long-term plan and a short-term plan, because there are children who are suffering now. There are children who are not getting the services that they need now. And for services, the sooner they can be introduced, the better for kids who need them. And there's windows, you know? And once those windows shut, you know, it becomes much harder, if not impossible, to help kids. So honestly, the whole thing that we need to just wait and see, and it'll be years and years, that's not acceptable for kids who are suffering now. Thank you.
Thanks. I will say, that's not what we're saying. But, you know, I guess I would resist that characterization. I do think we need to be thoughtful, and we need to go about it, to your point, in the way Hingham does, which is to bring the correct expertise around the table and to begin these, begin conversations, which I think will likely happen, you know, sometime after town meeting. So, I don't, you know, I don't think we are looking to prolong this, but we do need to be responsible to do that.
Well, and I would just say that, you know, two years ago, we have, two years ago, this board has started to undertake some long-term financial planning. And we started with the capital projects because they were right in front of us. And we started with foster school. And up until this past December, we didn't know if we were going to have to go out alone for foster school, or whether the MSBA would invite us into their program. The amount of money that the MSBA is contributing is significant. So, you know, it's really difficult to do, it's really difficult to do a lot of long-term planning until, you know, "Am I paying 100% of a foster school, or am I maybe paying 70%?" We decided to focus on the capital piece because we know that's right in front of us. And the other thing I'd say is that, in the last three years, as our board begins the budget process, and, you know, just so you know, in like October, we actually, in this room, in a public meeting, have a conversation with the town administrator about our budget guidelines for the year. What are we expecting? We give Tom direction. And actually, the three people, you know, your elected officials sitting in this chair, have a conversation about, you know, are we looking at the revenue we're having right now, or are we looking at an override? And actually, in each of the last three years, this board has had the conversation about, is this a time when we want to look at an override? And, you know, and I understand some may disagree with it, but I want you to know, we're having the conversation. We're having it in public. We're having it with the cameras on. And our rationale, again, some may not agree with it, is that conservatively, we're looking at 80 to 120 million dollars in capital projects. Schools are expensive. Everything costs a lot to build. And our thought in the last three years is, let's move ahead on some of those projects, foster school being first and foremost. And let's not try to go down the path of an override right now, because what we never really know is, how much will people be willing to open up their wallets for a tax increase? Hingham has, you know, we have to be thoughtful about that. And we would hate to be in a situation where, you know, let's say we do an override, and then two years later, we ask for money for foster school, and the taxpayers say no. We hear from a lot of people, and they're not just, you know, of all different demographics, that it's tough to live in Hingham. The average real estate bill's about $10,000. The tax law changes mean that that's not, anything over 10,000 isn't deductible anymore. So, you know, as we made those decisions about an override in the last three years, the thing that was right here was foster school. And again, we may disagree on the decision, but our motivation was to ensure that there's broad-based community support, because a two-thirds vote for a debt exclusion, which is what's needed at foster school, that's not easy to get at town meeting. And when it's most successful is when we all come together as a community, and we build consensus.
And part of the ask in the 568 is actually additional feasibility study money for foster school.
Right.
So, you were asked a couple, a year or so ago, to approve some number for feasibility. Given the increase in vertical construction costs, we want to make sure we have enough, because now that we've been accepted into the MSBA process, we have a better line of sight to the timeline. And so, you know, part of that ask includes additional funds for foster school feasibility. Mr. Asher, did you have a comment?
Jonathan Asher, 5 Common Street. I'm here just because I've watched the previous meeting, and I think tonight's discussion is very much along the same lines. And I thought a little trip down memory lane might be helpful and constructive. So, eight years ago, when I was Chair of the Advisory Committee, the town faced a budget and property tax challenge very similar to what we're discussing here tonight. In October 2011, citizens had approved an appropriation of over $60 million for the reconstruction of the middle school, with the understanding that it would increase the property tax on the average home by approximately $285 a year for the 20-year life of the associated debt exclusion borrowing. In March 2012, so eight years ago, the next fiscal year's budget was still unbalanced at about this point in time, by about $400,000, due mostly to late additions of some very expensive out-of-district tuitions that came up very suddenly. Couldn't plan for them. To address that challenge, the leadership teams from the Advisory Committee, the School Committee, met with the Board of Selectmen Chair, School Superintendent, Town Administrator, to do what was necessary to balance the budget. We had to get the warrant out within about a week or so, as I recollect, without resorting to an operating override. That was a difficult meeting, but it was a successful one, where all the groups, as we'd said, as was being mentioned a few minutes ago, came together and talked about, okay, how do we get to a balanced budget, which by law, we have to do? The meeting was successful, and a budget resulted that was supported by all involved. The demographics in town, from my perspective, had changed a little bit during the past eight years. My understanding is that enrolled students now constitute about 19% of the school, of the town's population. And at the other end of the age spectrum, roughly 25% of the town's citizens are age 62 or over, and many on fixed income. As was the case in the autumn of 2011, the town is, again, being asked to approve a debt exclusion borrowing for reconstruction of a school, foster school this time, which is projected to increase property taxes for the 20-year life of the borrowing by about $435 a year on the average home. However, as we learned from Selectman Powers' presentation a couple of weeks ago, there are a number of additional capital projects that have been in the wings for some time that the town needs to address in the next several years, the sum total of which, as Mary just said, could easily surpass $100 million. Those projects include two new fire stations, increased space for our police, recreation department, senior center, as well as country club repair, and harbor improvements related to sea level rise. If debt exclusions for all those projects were to be approved at town meeting by the town's citizens, property taxes on the average home could increase by as much as $870 a year. So, given the prospect of some very significant capital project tax increases over the next several years, I would recommend that the Board of Selectmen, School Committee leadership, Advisory Committee leadership, School Superintendent and Town Administrator follow the example set eight years ago by their predecessors, and take the full picture of town demographics and town projects into account, and work collaboratively to balance the budget without resorting to a further permanent tax increase, which would be represented by an operating override. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, John. Michelle.
Thank you. Michelle Eyre, 41 Hemlock Road, also Chair of the Hingham School Committee. I don't know that I have any, I can't, I wasn't really expecting to speak tonight because I was feeling like we've been talking about this budget since September on a Sunday afternoon in September, when the School Committee first met with our new superintendent, Dr. Austin. I think he's here somewhere. And we really do appreciate everything that the town provides to the schools, and for the work that the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee does on behalf of the town, and on behalf of our students. And that gratefulness is sincere, and I, my heart breaks for you, because I would not want to be sitting where you are. That's why I'm on the School Committee. Or Advisory, right? I mean, it is a tough job. You guys have to make the tough choices. Libby reminded us tonight, though, that our job as School Committee members, per our policy, is to work on the behalf of the community, but not at the expense of our students. So, there are just a couple of points that I wanted to make, that if we're spending $0.65 every tax dollar to support our students, that's as it should be. The law requires that public school education is required for each and every student. A free and appropriate public education is by law required for a town to provide to their students, to meet all of their needs. That is a Herculean task that I don't see how any community can actually do, right? Not when you're limited by Proposition 2 and 1/2. So, the bad guy here isn't Advisory Committee. It's not the School Committee. It's not the Board of Selectmen. It's probably Proposition 2 and 1/2, right? We have a limited amount of revenue that we can bring in. And I hear what you're saying, and I feel for the position that you're in, and appreciate it, and appreciate every penny that this town and the taxpayers provide to the students of our town. I think, though, that we just have to remember that balanced budget isn't a success if students, right? So, it's successful on the fact that we balanced the budget, but we didn't meet the needs of all our kids. And it's difficult when parents are having to spend their own money to supplement what they're not getting from the schools. And what breaks our heart on the School Committee is when there are parents who can't afford to do that, and their kids get left behind. And they do. And it happens every day in the Hingham Public Schools. And that's heartbreaking for those of us on the School Committee, because we're the ones, that's our job, to protect those students and to bring equity to them, and to do what the right thing is for those students. So, I appreciate the work that you're all doing. I appreciate everything that you give to us. We appreciate what the townsfolk do. But I do just want to say that the, I think what everything that we're hearing tonight and the past few months is, we need to figure out more ways to generate more revenue. That's the bottom line. We don't have, we say it on my job all the time, "We don't have an expense problem. We have a revenue problem." It just becomes an expense problem when you don't have the revenue. So, I know folks are working on it. And to your point, Karen, you guys do a lot of work behind the scenes that are not, not behind the scenes, not that anyone's violating open meeting laws and doing things behind the scenes, but that you're working very hard to come up with ways to generate revenues. And we'll go back to the School Department, and we'll figure out how we're going to make this budget work. You know, we, you know, Dr. Austin presented a budget that we need at 6%. We'll get, maybe if we're lucky, 4.4%, and we'll make it work the best we can. But I did just want to just clarify that the role of the School Committee is to, you know, look out for the best interest of our students, as well as the community. But we can't do it, at least our job is, we cannot do it at the expense of the students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Well said.
Libby Lewicki, 370 Gardner Street. And I am on the School Committee, but I'm speaking as a community member. I think the tides are changing, and that there will be community support for an override, and that we need to start talking about it and educating ourselves on how to do it. Rather than thinking that people aren't going to be behind it, we need to figure out how to get people behind it. And I think that the showing tonight is a good sign that people will be behind it, and that we can educate others to do so as well. And I appreciate it if you would start thinking along those lines, rather than putting your hands up immediately and saying, "No, we're not going to do an override in Hingham. It's time to do an override in Hingham."
Thanks, Libby. You know, I will say, as Mary pointed out, it's not that we put our hands up when we say no. We have a conversation on TV in public, and we think about all of the priorities that we see coming down the pike, and we think about how that impacts every single household in Hingham. So, you know, that's our job. And so, part of it, part of the difficulty, and really, the difficulty in the fall, when the budget message was crafted, as Barry reminded us tonight, was we had no idea what was going to happen with foster school. And frankly, we wanted to put ourselves in a position to support foster school no matter what. And so, that was sort of the stopping point. Like, we have this need. We've recognized this need for several years in a row. The School Committee and the School Administration worked very hard to put that question before the MSBA. But there are, as you know, needs across the Commonwealth that the MSBA also has to weigh. I'd take this job over the MSBA's job any day of the week, because I think it's very, very difficult. I think we have schools and municipal buildings that have been repurposed all kind of at the same time. So, we have this function, again, across Massachusetts, where buildings are coming offline altogether. And, you know, the fact that construction costs have increased, and just the physical plant of these places has increased, just drives costs, you know, through the roof. And the, one of the issues now at the MSBA level is, some of the low-hanging fruit, some of the middle school, elementary school projects have moved through the pipeline, and the MSBA is faced now with high school projects, which are much, much more expensive by municipality. So, you know, I think, if I'm trying to remember, which is, it's a feat unto itself, where I was in the fall, I think that that was where I was. I wanted to make sure that I could support foster school no matter what. And that was part of the analysis that I went through in giving you the message that I was not ready to consider an override at that point in time. I saw another hand, I think. And I'll get to you next, Ray.
Good evening. My name is Tiana Do Suarez. I'm at 3 Beecham Place. Thank you for tonight, for hearing our voices. I am so honored to be here, to speak in front of you, to have this democracy in place. I've never been in a town like this. I've had the privilege to live here for over 10 years, so I'm just completely honored. I'm also here to fully ask you to invest in our School Department and listen to who we... we elected as officials, yourself, as well as our school committee members. They know the ins and outs, they know what's needed in our school. As long as, like you said, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, well, I guarantee you, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work from these community members as well. We elect them for people, different position that we elected. They are strong in, you know, being fiscal conservative, people that have special needs as well as people that have the overall picture. So, just not one type of person that we elected on our school committee to represent as a whole. I also understand that there's needs all across, but I hope that you take in tonight's conversation just to consider again to override and to support the school because I really feel that if, you know, the most valuable thing in any, for me as an immigrant incoming to school here is the education system. And that is so, so valuable. And it does, you had another representative here that said, "It comes back to the town." And I truly believe that because you see how this is a well-run town, it's exactly what we need. We need to do it for our resident or our community or students or administration, that is best for our town. I know it's difficult to ask to go back to the town. I don't think it necessarily has to be mutually non-exclusive to necessarily ask to fund for the school as well as support foster. I'm so glad you have that at the forefront. I'm not a foster resident or my children doesn't go there, but I will be there to help the initiative. If the Selectmen said, "This is what we're going to support you," I promise you, you will have town support. I remember about eight years ago when they had the Hingham Middle School, it was really not in my realm of thinking at that time, but there was a big march to go out there and to spread the news, to educate people. And I remember tons of people coming out to the town hall, people that didn't have kids, the age group that's, you know, that didn't really need to invest their school as well as kids that didn't go to our, our public school system. So, there were tons of residents, caring people here that came back and supported that initiative. So, again, please take into consideration of who we also elected our official as well as Selectmen, advisory committee and our community members and our school board. This is who I rely on, who's giving the information, who's distributing that, is who is representing all of our parents in our town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Estes.
Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street. So, I had the pleasure of serving on the school committee for six years. And, John, I appreciated that story from 2012 because I was in the thick of that. I'm not going to give an opinion about an override. You know, it's interesting, Ted Alexiades, our former town administrator and before that town accountant, used to talk about, "At some point, we're going to need an operating override. At some point, we're going to need an operating override." And this was post the East override to open that school. And I don't know. Maybe at some point, we will. But Mary, what you talked about tonight made great sense to me. And you're a numbers guy, I know. So, here's, here's some numbers. Well, you've called, you've called yourself a numbers guy.
Probably.
More than once. So, so here's some numbers. So, Mary, sorry, Karen, you were just talking about the MSBA process and the cost of, of school building. So, one of the things that we learned, by the way, I serve on the school building committee now as the vice chair, so I'm pleased to start working on the foster project. One of the things that we learned when we were invited by the MSBA into this program for foster was that unlike when we built the middle school and opened it in 2014 and before that, East School, which opened in 2009, there is now a reimbursable cap on per square foot for building. Just, just to give somebody some context, folks in the room, the middle school cost $285 per square foot to build, just kind of base. There was some ineligible costs and some site work and things that go beyond that, but just basically $285 a square foot. We are now seeing building projects in the Commonwealth well above 300, well above 400, some in the $500 per square foot costs for construction. Construction costs are at an all-time high right now. That's a fact. And as a result, in order to budget more closely, the MSBA has instituted a cap on what they will reimburse per square foot. And that's $333 per square foot. So, basically, anything above $333 a square foot is going to be on the Hingham taxpayer and will not be reimbursable by any percent by the Commonwealth through the MSBA program. That's important to recognize because unless we get really lucky, and, and I don't know when we're going to go out to bid, it might be a year from now, it might be two years from now for foster, but unless we get really lucky, like we did with the middle school, we are likely not going to be under $333 a square foot. I'd be surprised if we were based on the current trend and how I've seen construction costs go up over the last five, six years. That being said, you know, I, I don't know what the cost of foster is going to be. The middle school ended up costing about $56,400, okay? The appropriation you said was 60.9. We, we got a bid that was 2 and 1/2 under, we got really lucky. And then through, through close management, value engineering and, and a really tight process, we were able to save another $2 million under the appropriation. So, $56,400, really successful project, but we got lucky. I don't know that we can count on that kind of good luck again. You're talking about other projects, you know, you mentioned the PRS windows tonight. These are the greatest hits for me. Five, so, so five years ago, I came before you as a member of the school committee asking for support for an SOI with the MSBA for PRS windows. And the board could not support at the time citing the need to focus on other needed projects. Now, some of those projects have not yet come to fruition, but they're no less needed now than they were five years ago, fire stations being, being some of those examples. So, we have so many projects on the horizon. I know that there's a master plan report going on. There's going to be something that comes out of that master plan, for sure. There's also a recreation field study master plan going on. There's likely to be something that comes out of that as well that folks, many, many in this room are going to want to support, and that's going to mean dollars. So, I just want folks to kind of realize that what they're suggesting is, is not wrong. There's a lot and there's only so much money. If you think about your own family, there's only so much money. I have four children. They all want things. You can't always have everything at the same time. And as much as I want every dollar possible for the schools because I'm a huge supporter of them and I still have four children in the Hingham Public Schools, I recognize the difficulty of balancing the budget every year and dealing with the push-pulls of what everyone in this room and everyone else in the community of 20, 23,000 wants, needs and deserves. So, I just wanted to give folks some context, some numbers, and to really think about, you know, an override is, 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 is a concept, but there's a lot that goes into it and it has ramifications across the entire community in terms of economics. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ray. So, I'm going to allow maybe one more comment. We actually have a pretty full agenda. This was the first thing. I'm not doing too well time-wise. So, if you have a quick comment, that'd be great. And I appreciate everybody's time tonight.
I'm Jen Van Gelder. Sorry, I also lose my voice. I live at 13 Independence Lane. And I think one thing that's striking me as I sit here, and I have a child in this position, so I apologize if I'm a little emotional, is that you're all talking about numbers. And the tier-level one support that Dr. Austin proposed talked about adding numbers and adding increased support in math. And then in fact, if we don't add that, we're not allowing our children to be able to participate in this conversation moving forward. And that when they grow up to be our age, they may not be able to do all of this. That, that the math skills that they're not getting in school now aren't going to enable them to be able to live in Hingham and stay in Hingham and get good-paying jobs and get the STEAM jobs that everybody seems to be talking about because clearly that's the direction we're headed. So, I, I want to make it, I, I want to, I mean, I know you guys understand and I, I'm not going to belabor this, your job is, is a tenable job and I appreciate all that you do, but take in mind that as parents, we also do a lot of things and providing a lot of outside support that is not necessarily in our budget, but you find a way to make it happen. Because if your child needs math and they're failing in school, it's not a great feeling and you do whatever you need to do. So, I just.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. And I think, and we've, we've heard, and I, I think I'm, I'm going to wrap it up because we've, we've spent a significant amount of time on this, this evening and like I said, we've got a, a really lengthy agenda. But your, your comment is, is well-taken and I think that one of the things that we did reflect on after the last meeting was the fact that there are costs that are being borne by, by the parents, both in terms of user fees across the organization as well as, you know, independent family decisions about resource allocation for extra help. And, and that, that again, it doesn't go unnoticed by us. So, I, I think your point is well-taken that there are collectively more resources that come to the table particularly by parents of school-aged children to make sure that the educational experience is what, what they need it to be and certain of those, you know, are, are user fees that the, the school department is, you know, forced to charge particular cohorts of kids that are participating in particular activities. So, I, I, I get it. I, I definitely do. But it doesn't make this any easier.
Can I say a few things?
Yes, absolutely.
Appreciate all the comments. And I, I want to start by saying that I actually still have a child in the Hingham Public School System. My oldest graduated last year.
Very much younger than the rest of us.
I started late. But I, I have a child in the Hingham Public School System and so when I go home tonight, you know, yeah, these are all numbers, but I go home and see Brendan. And I'm making sure Brendan's got his homework done and that his clothes are ready for school tomorrow because I, I understand that behind all this, there are children and I know that our children are a most important thing. I know that they are, they are for all of us. I just want to start by mentioning that this board has supported Hingham schools in a lot of different ways. I, I'm not going to belabor this too much, but I, I think some of it needs to be said. You know, when Karen was on the advisory committee, she supported the construction and opening of East School, which was by no means a slam dunk. And actually during that time, I led the Friends of Hingham Public Schools. Somewhere in a closet, there are phone bank logs and call scripts and, you know, that was building East School, renovating Plymouth River and renovating Foster. My kids were actually at South School. My kids did not benefit in one bit from any of those projects, but I did it because I felt strongly about education in Hingham. When Karen and I were on the advisory committee, we both supported funding a special education stabilization fund to address late-breaking news with out-of-district tuitions. We supported the construction of the new middle school, the rehabilitation of the high school fields, track and tennis courts. And I would point out that there was organized opposition to the Hingham Middle School and to the track. I can remember meeting at Nico's on a Sunday morning to strategize what we were going to do at town meeting and, and other things to kind of get that through. Couple of years ago, when I, as, as a member of this board, I was actually the one that suggested that we put forward a Warren article for a feasibility, for feasibility study money in a building committee. Normally, you wait till you get invited into the program. But I can remember calling the Chair of the School Committee and saying, "Let's not wait. Let's show them that we're going to be ready and let's not lose any time and let's start to get the community around it." And so, it's really important to me that people take away from this, that this is a group that supported it. And, and I can tell you folks, when, when I was sitting in that chair or sitting in advisory, there were boards of selectmen that were not this supportive of, of, of education. So, I just, I just want to start with that. You know, we're, we're really are, so, just a couple other things. As I'm looking at the school budget and I've looked through it and I appreciate all the information, there are a couple of things that, that sort of jump out to me. When we had the budget hearing, we heard a lot about new initiatives. I asked questions. I said, "Are there any programs that we're not doing or that we're scaling back? Or are there any things we've looked at at trying to find a more cost-effective way to deliver services?" And the answer I got this year was the answer I've gotten in the past few years, which is no. And, and on a $56 million budget, I, it's difficult for me to, it's difficult to me when I don't see attempts to deliver services in a different way or to say, gee, as the student profile is changing, maybe there are things that, services that we no longer need to offer. You know, four years ago, we, we eliminated an outreach coordinator in the senior center because we said, "While we need that, we need something else more." We did the same thing in the Board of Health a couple of years ago. And I haven't seen that as much in the school budget, which makes me question whether there are some opportunities to do some things differently. Now, I also realize that we've had a lot of leadership changes in the last year, so I don't think it's reasonable to expect that with, with our new school leadership, that can happen right now. But I would say that before there's any serious conversation about an override, we as a, as a town team, right? Because we go into this Team, Team Hingham, we got to be convinced and be able to convince people that every dollar is, is working towards people, that we've looked at it, that we've asked those critical questions. And I don't think we're there today. I would also say, without going into the weeds on this because it's late, we've had a lot of discussion about revolving funds. I continue to disagree with the school department's position on it. There is a million and a half dollars in revolving funds. We're talking about fund balance and putting money to work. And I respectfully disagree that the food service budget revolving fund can't absorb benefits, which would add $60,000 to the education budget. If I look at the athletic and the building and the field use fees, I look and say, if you took $150,000 in each of the next three years and applied that to the budget, it would create some more capacity. I, I just, I respectfully disagree that those funds can't be tapped into more. And it's difficult for me to put myself in a position to ask the taxpayers to raise their taxes when I'm looking at a million and a half dollars in accounts that are being, that are being underutilized or that are, that are not being utilized. My proposal to my colleagues would be that, I think we've talked about, you know, the remaining surplus to the education budget. If my colleagues were interested, I would propose that we recommend to the advisory committee that we reduce group insurance by $60,000, add that money to the education budget, which is basically our board recommending that the food service revolving fund, which has a balance of $800,000 in it, assume responsibility for those benefits. It, it doesn't affect the municipal budget, it adds $60,000 to the education budget. I understand if, if we don't want to do that tonight, but, you know, short of, short of that, I, I, I think, I think then we know what the, kind of the numbers are.
Do you have any comments on that?
I would be hesitant to go behind the school budget and make that allocation shift here. I think that's something that should be discussed in advisory. I think that the, the spirit that I've heard from the room and I've heard from the speakers is, is really one of mutual support, that we are in this as a town, it's not one cohort against another cohort, it's recognizing that we're all looking to, to achieve the goal of really getting the benefit for the students, for the seniors, for everyone else who's living in town. And I think pushing forward with an override at this point, to me, is premature. I, you know, I'm comfortable going with what the town administrator recommended, allocating the remainder to the school. And to the extent that the school committee looks at its own budget and wants to make a reallocation, I would be supportive of that. But that's not something I would want to take up at this meeting.
Okay. You know, Mary, I, I appreciate the amount of time and energy that you've put into analyzing every dollar on the town side as well as every dollar on the school side. every dollar on the town side, as well as every dollar on the school side. And, you know, we've had some conversations. You know, we met with the forecast group this morning, and I raised the question again of the revolving funds. Because on the town side, and you can maybe speak to the numbers more specifically, but part of our level services request this year... So we take a look at, how much is it going to cost us to give you the same services we gave you last year? And we come up with that number. And then we say to ourselves, where can we... How can we fund that number? Where are those dollars going to come from? And some of the dollars will come from the tax levy. But some of the dollars, like you saw Tom present tonight, some of the dollars, we said, well, actually, some of that's really water company expense. So water ratepayers... It's fair to ask water ratepayers to kick in to pay for some of the GIS coordinator, because some of what the GIS coordinator is going to do is going to directly benefit the water ratepayers. Similarly, in the building department. So we have a salary. We have our building inspector, who does an amazing job. And he works through a lot of difficult situations for a lot of people in this town. And he's a very... And that's a very important position. He has a salary. We said... And so 100% of that salary is actually level services for next year. But we said, gee, let's take a look at the building permit revolving fund, because maybe there's a way not to have to ask for 100% of his salary out of the tax levy, but something less. And so that's what we did this year. We said, okay, we can actually take a piece of the revolving fund and pay some of the salaries of our building department, so we don't have to ask the tax levy for that. And what does that do? It frees up that money to then do this other stuff with. But it's trying to take the group that directly benefits from the money in the revolving fund, and to reduce the ask from the levy to fund that position. So that's... Those are the kinds of things that we've had to do, and we do do periodically, in evaluating, what money do we have? And what money do we need in the revolving fund? So the revolving fund's there, so you actually have the ability to pay the folks that go out and inspect buildings, because we owe them money. But... And you all pay building fees that come back into the building revolving fund. So just like the fund balance question we had tonight, these are almost like mini-fund balances for particular activities that take place in town. So the question is, what's prudent to carry as a balance in those revolving funds? And what can we free up so we don't have to ask the levy to support that whole thing? So that's what Mary's asking, is, is there a way to evaluate the balances that the school committee is carrying in those revolving funds? And is there any money there that could go to support the level services budget, so you don't have to ask the levy? Or to support some of the other programs that you want to have within your budget that you could pay for using the money that's in the revolving funds? Now, to Joe's point, I guess I don't have a clear enough line of sight to say, you know, I think you're spending X, and I think you should be spending Y out of that particular fund. But I do think there... I do think that's an analysis. And maybe you come back and say, as it... Maybe the school committee comes back and says, no. You know, if we were to take another 10% out of this fund, that puts us in jeopardy of being able to offer the service and be able to pay for the service that that revolving fund is meant to support. But it's worth, I would think, a really hard look, because that's the responsibility we take on. And that's what we delivered for you as part of the balanced budget, or Tom delivered for you as part of the balanced budget proposal that he and Sue and Michelle have put forward.
And I would just add on the food service, because I agree with you. I would just point out that 10 years ago, when the town was going through kind of some financial difficulty, there were discussions between school leadership and town leadership and advisory at the time, and I was part of the advisory committee. And we looked and said, are there revolving funds that make sense to support the benefits? And so, for example, the Kids in Action benefits came out of the Kids in Action revolving fund. And the food service was also looked at. And at the time, the program economics were not stable enough to be able to do that. So the kind of agreement, nothing written down, but the agreement was, when the food service revolving fund got healthy enough to have the conversation, we will have the conversation. I think a balance of $800,000, when you're looking at $60,000 in benefits a year, says that it's time to have the conversation. And that's why I would propose it. I'd also say, because it's not our purview to say where money is spent, we do manage the group insurance budget. And so I would not go so far as to make any other recommendations, but I do think that bringing this up, I'm in my lane, because we manage that group insurance budget.
No, no. And I don't disagree with that.
So I think this is a little bit of a different circumstance, and that's why I brought it up.
Yep. No, I don't disagree with it. I guess I just... I haven't spent the time with the trending of that budget. But, I mean, the raw numbers certainly suggest that an analysis is in order.
You know, I look at those Tier One requests, and every one of them is worthy. And I want to make sure that we're trying to fund as many of them as possible. And I think that we need to look in all different places for ways to fund. That's... I bring it up in that spirit.
Yep. And you are the numbers guy, so we...
The numbers guy.
You got a guy.
Do we have to vote all these individually?
No. So, no, especially at this late hour. So at town meeting, you'll hear the individual call of the payroll and expense. What I will tell you is that if my colleagues are in agreement, I've heard Joe signal agreement that he's in support of Tom's presented priorities, which add a little over 87,966 to the level services request, or a total for a 3.808% increase. If we vote the budget as presented with these additional requests, I would feel comfortable moving it in that way. So what it would mean is, this far-right column on the sheet that we're looking at includes each of the budget priorities that you've listed. And maybe you could go back to that page, Tom, page four, so that people know what we're voting. So in addition to just business as usual, these would be the ads on the town side. And I think that we could vote the numbers as presented with the additional requests.
And then the balance was the 102,311.
And what's in here on the school budget?
And I think that that's...
Is that included in...
Mm-hmm. Is that included? Yes.
Okay.
Third page, I think.
So the balance of the surplus, which is 102... Tell me that number again.
102,311.
Would be reflected in the budget.
Just the budget.
Okay. That is reflected in the number that we would vote. So that's the number that we... That's the number that we would vote, which would be a grand total of 112,763,027. Further comments from my colleagues?
Would you accept a motion?
I would.
I'm looking for my vote list. I move to recommend the budgets as presented to the advisory committee.
The budget as presented with the town administrator's additional requests.
With the town administrator's additional requests.
Right. So that's to recommend the fiscal year 2021 budget?
Yes.
Second.
Okay. Fiscal 2021 budget in a total amount of 112,763,027. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody. Thanks for being here. And thanks for the comments.
Now, we're just on to the second item of the...
Yeah.
Oh, do we have to vote capital?
We have voted capital. Yeah. I think it's the next item.
Michelle says it's...
I think it's on the vote list.
Here's the capital outlay. Would you take a motion?
Yes.
I'm entertaining a motion, no approval of the capital outlay budget, as recommended by the capital outlay committee. Move to recommend the capital outlay budget in the amount of $2,487,066.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're done. Thank you.
Okay.
Good catch. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we are moving to the consideration of Article O, repair and reconstruction of the Town Pier. Mr. Reardon.
My name is Bill Reardon. I'm the chairman of the Harbor Development Committee, here this evening to talk about the resiliency and reconstruction work of Town Pier. I have with me Eric Loss and Dan Gagny from Beals &amp; Thomas, who have been our engineer consultants through this project. And we'll talk a little bit about the chronology and how we got there. Thank you for having this session. It's an important one. If I could have the slides put up there, I guess. Can I borrow that, Thomas? And it's forward there, and...
To the right is forward.
To the right is forward. And is the laser working?
You do it at your own risk, because if it hit the wrong button, I would say stick with the right.
You get a second-degree burn.
And your point where?
Up there. No, I'm sorry. Back here.
Okay. It actually did there.
It'll read it.
So for the audience, for those both here in the room and for those at home, I've put up a table that reflects the chronology of the Harbor Development Committee's work on this subject over the last five years. You know, in some respects, it goes further than that. We're here tonight to move toward actually beginning construction on one of the three town piers. What this chronology does is to remind us, it's been a long time in coming. We started really five years ago with the Kleinfelder study of sea level rise and the resiliency necessary to address some of the vulnerabilities that flooding and major storm surge could have on the town. At other town meetings over the last two years, I've shown slides. There was the picture of the Iron Horse, which was an island rather than a hill. And of the Hingham Maritime Center with two feet of water on top of the entire pier. So we have been moving forward to address that for some time. We used Beals &amp; Thomas and others to gather data, begin to work on designs that would address both reconstructing walls that are of our old piers that are bulging and sagging and beginning to fail. And at the same time, addressing what I think we're all recognizing is happening with coastal increases in flooding and sea level rise. And then we haven't even talked about the storm surge, the Hurricane Sandy kind of thing that had impacted New York so much. More recently, in 2018, we, with the selectmen's and many other boards in the town, went ahead with approvals and recognition that we were designing a certain type of wharf for each of the three major wharfs. They are Town Pier, Veterans Park, and the Barnes Wharf for Hingham Maritime Center Works. This fall, we made a bit of a shift in decision to say, well, rather than trying to proceed with all three projects at once, perhaps it was both fiscally more prudent and from a permitting and design perspective, better to go initially with one of the three wharfs. Town Pier was the one that was the furthest along, had had more engineering done to it. The Hingham Maritime Center on Barnes Wharf and the lease situation there, and their plans for a new building have caused that project to slow down a little bit. So we came to the selectmen at a November meeting, met with you, and I think there was concurrence that it made more sense to go with one. So since that time, Beals &amp; Thomas has been working hard to finish the permitting exercise, get the permits into place so that we move forward with this. More recently, there's been perhaps a revisiting, in part by the selectmen, wanting to make sure that the decisions that we had initially made two years ago about how high are we raising these wharfs, are they still appropriate? Kleinfelder study was 2015. It's now 2020. So there was some give and take on that. I'm going to allow Beals &amp; Thomas to speak to that a little bit. The selectmen are well aware of this request, and I hope have had an opportunity to read the five-page letter that Beals &amp; Thomas put together to respond to some of those concerns. So we're here tonight to consider, can we go forward? There are some things that have changed, in terms of the dollars particularly, and we'll talk about that. I want to make sure that there's ample time to talk about it. I know it's been a dollar evening. It's not great fun to follow that conversation. So I'm just going to remind people a little bit what the project will do for us. And I'm going to... I can't go up to there. So you guys don't have a laser, do you? On? Is that on here? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, got it. So again, for those in the audience, this is Town Pier. Iron Horse is there. The project will put a new armor stone layer along that small beach and raise its height about four feet. The same for the wall surrounding Town Pier. That now is 7.2 feet above mean low water. It will rise to a height of 11 feet, which happens to be the same height as Whitney Wharf, which is next to it, the one that we redid in 2004. Some of the other things that more recently we've come up and focused on is, right now, there's parking right all through here. That parking will swing and now be down here. That will increase the size of the park space and the usable space for enjoyment of the harbor itself. We talk about raising the level of the wharf in a similar style, granite blocks. Right now, if you went on that wharf, you'll notice that you could drive a baby carriage right off the edge. The plan will allow the full height of the wall to come up four feet, but we will backfill so that there will still be a reveal of about a foot and a half around, so that there is more protection for people walking safely without the danger of someone perhaps falling off. So a major project, something we known we needed to do for a long time. There are two more that will follow, but we wanted to start with Town Pier. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Eric, who will give us a sense of where we are currently and what remains to be done. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Bill. For the record, my name is Eric Loss, principal of Beals &amp; Thomas. One of the more significant discussions that has come up recently regarding the design, and as it relates to future sea level rise, storm surge, which is increasing as coastal storms become more intense, is after this, say, this project moves forward with the design to elevation 11, which is four feet higher than it currently is at Town Pier now, what measures are there built into the design that would allow for future modularity, as we're calling it? And that's been one of the things that we've focused on quite a bit and have firmed up in the design and in our cost estimates. And where we're at currently is that the design that we're proposing at present would allow, in the future, on an as-needed basis, for an additional one and a half feet of modular increase over what we're currently proposing. So that would be a five-and-a-half-foot increase over the existing conditions. One of the things that the selectmen had asked for recently, as we're getting closer to potential construction and funding of this project, is to confirm that the assumptions that were made and the findings of the 2015 climate change study that was done for the town are still accurate before the dollars are potentially appropriated. And what we're finding in checking that is that the assumptions are generally still very close to the same in terms of sea level rise. Sea level rise is just one aspect, that is, actual increase of the sea level, independent of storm surges or wave action. And in the Boston Harbor area, going back to 2000, over the past 20 years now, they're seeing on average, one-tenth of an inch of sea level rise per year. So that means over the past 20 years, about two inches of sea level rise. The 2015 study that Kleinfelder had done... The 2015 study that Kleinfelder had done, which was comparing 2000 to 2030, which was the design horizon that was selected for our current design, had predicted about eight inches of sea level rise between 2000 and 2030. So, we're only seeing about two inches of that eight in the first 20 years. It is potential that the rate would accelerate over the next 10. But the bottom line, to answer the question that was raised by the selectmen, is that it does appear that the Kleinfelder estimate does appear still to be valid and perhaps somewhat conservative. So, we do think that the current design does fully account for that sea level rise, and in fact, it's beyond that because the Kleinfelder study had recommended designing Town Pier to an elevation of 10.2 feet, and we're currently proposing going to elevation 11. So, there's eight tenths of an additional foot on top of that. So, in terms of the design, we think that it is still responsive to expectations for sea level rise and does have up to 1.5 additional feet of modularity in the design presently. Those were two big aspects of the most recent discussions we've had with the town that were raised to Beals &amp; Thomas. The next, which is really one of the primary reasons we're here, is given those aspects, what do the cost estimates appear to be for this project to go potentially out to bid? Going back, the last cost estimate that we had been working off of was prepared by the engineering department, Town and Hingham Engineering Department, in 2018. So, in that time that that initial cost estimate was prepared, we've accounted for this modularity in the design. Bill had talked about site wear costs in terms of a new parking area. There's drainage improvements that have to happen there. During storm events, you not only have to consider the sea coming in, potentially flooding the site, you're also going to potentially have significant rainfall events. That's adding rainfall onto Town Pier and surrounding areas as well that you have to account for and be able to drain that water out so that you don't have a bathtub effect. So, there are additional site wear costs, there is inflation, and in particular, there is this modularity aspect that is now accounted for in our design. Beals &amp; Thomas being asked to prepare a current 2020 cost estimate, we, over the past couple of weeks in particular, since we recently met on February 7th, have done a top-down full accounting cost estimate, which we'll show further in our next slide. And through that process, what we're finding is that, you know, since 2018, the anticipated costs for this project have increased. It's not necessarily that the project has changed dramatically, it's that as we're closer to potential construction now and it's going out to bid, and the design plans have been further refined, that we've been able to account for the full aspects of this project potentially going into construction. We also were able to do some benchmarking. We did benchmarking on two different levels based upon the selectmen's requests. We've benchmarked a number of projects in terms of what other towns were designing their seawalls to for design standards. That's included in the memorandum that we had provided the selectmen last week. We can go into that in more detail. We also benchmark on a cost basis as well. The town of Duxbury had done a seawall project somewhat recently, slightly different construction type. It was a concrete wall approximately 18 feet high on average. The granite block wall that we're proposing here at Town Pier, obviously a different type of construction. We have wall heights up to 19 total feet in height, but it did provide us with a benchmark on a linear cost basis per foot that was a helpful guide in terms of checking our estimate as well. And... I might want to advance to the next slide, though. This slide here, which is the final slide of our summary, demonstrates the differences and where the cost allocations are coming from between, going back to 2018, again, before the design was advanced to the stage it's at now, that was prepared by the engineering department, versus the cost estimate that Beals &amp; Thomas just prepared in the past two weeks in the right column, and then the difference between the two. That first-line item, which is called construction subtotal, covers, I'm just going to quickly run through just to give everyone a sense of what comprises that construction subtotal. That includes the mobilization, demolition of the existing wall, the earth infill that would bring the overall level up so that there is just an 18-inch reveal at the edge of the wall, the parking lot improvements, a walkway around the perimeter, loading and seating. There is a revetment that has to happen to tie the project in over to the boat ramp to the west. We have cofferdams that have to be constructed around the wall to keep the seawater out during construction. And those all comprise, as well as the seawall itself, the actual granite block and backfill, that construction subtotal. So, those are all of the factors that we evaluated going into those numbers, and that is where we see the largest changes. In terms of contingency, there is a substantial contingency. You know, we're still at permit-level drawings presently, right? We have not applied yet for our local, state, federal permits for the project. I think at this point, we wanted to make sure that everyone's still on board in terms of the design, elevation. But there is a significant contingency, and that is adding to the total cost estimate. We have checked with the town's other consultant, Amory Engineers. They do think that the contingency we're carrying is consistent at this stage for permit level. It is very similar to what the engineering department had carried for a contingency in We've also carried a few other considerations that would ultimately go with the construction of the project, including pursuing state grant funding. The town, we assisted the town in getting, becoming a municipal vulnerability preparedness community. That provides the town with the ability to apply for MVP action grants. There is up to $2 million per project that's awarded. Under that program, the town recent, excuse me, the state recently funded $10.5 million in projects throughout the Commonwealth, just in the most recent MVP funding cycle. So, we would also be considering pursuing grant opportunities to offset and defer some of the cost for this project. But as it stands, our current cost estimate for the project is just under $5.5 million.
Did Dan want to add anything, or?
No, Eric's already covered. When he has a second.
So, I had some discussions with Eric and Dan in the hallway, and we were talking about the fact that this is a bigger number than we've been looking at, and we're all dealing with that. And I think Eric has explained some of the differences between where we were, which was a 2018 estimate prepared by our former town engineer and their staff. Joe, I think when you met with Beals &amp; Thomas in early February, you really urged them, make sure, you know, you're comfortable with, I mean, these need to be your numbers that you can now support, and that's what we have. It strikes me that, given a bigger number, we perhaps have some decisions to make, but why don't we talk about reactions to the letter and reactions to this first, and then we can talk about what are the alternative ways that we can proceed forward.
Do you want to lead off, Joe?
I'll lead off. I mean, I think, Bill, you've put an incredible amount of work into this, and your team has, and we appreciate it. I appreciate it. I am the one who asked a lot of the questions that you're responding to now, and to an extent, that was additional effort on your part. I appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions I want to go over, actually picking up on the last comment in terms of seeking grant funding. One of the questions that I'd asked is whether or not the specs that we had for this project, would they facilitate or hinder our ability to apply for and get those grants? For example, we are coming in below the 100-year flood line, and if that's one of the standards that is used for grants, we're not going to get it. So, I just want to make sure that that issue has been addressed and that you're comfortable, you, the collective you, comfortable that, moving forward as proposed, we're not spiting ourselves by coming up with standards that are below what would otherwise qualify us for grant applications.
So, shall I deal with them one at a time? I'll give a quick answer, but then I'm going to look to the folks who really understand the municipal vulnerability program. I looked at the materials that Beals &amp; Thomas put together in the letter. There were some other communities mentioned. Several of them went to, you know, a 100-year flood level. I need to really emphasize, because I know some of those communities, communities make a decision that, based on, as we did, aesthetics, cost, and safety, and it depends where the project is. If that's a, if a project in Matapoisette, which is on Buzzards Bay, and gets, you know, massive storm coming at them, if I were them, I'd go for the 100-year flood, too. We are an inner-Boston Harbor community. We've been fortunate. We have not had a Hurricane Sandy-like event here. We could, but we don't get Hull or Situat or Marshfield 30-foot waves coming at our... So, that's part of the issue. The other, which we emphasized when we talked to the selectmen, when we made our recommendation of what height we were going for, this trade-off of aesthetics at particularly Town Pier, which is kind of the iconic pier, how much additional height do we want to add? Four feet is not small. We talked about, I think 100-year flood would have made it four feet higher even, so it would have been an eight-foot increase, something on that order. And our collective judgment, which seemed to be confirmed by the other committees, including the selectmen at the time, was it seems like the right balance, especially with the modularity impact that we knew would be there 10 years or 15 years from now. But I'll let Eric answer the question specifically with respect to MVP on is there any kind of standard?
Right.
My understanding, there was not, but I'm going to let...
Sure. So, the MVP action grant program, the standard that they hold communities to is that they would like projects to be designed based upon local climate studies. Hingham is in the fortunate position to have funded such a study in 2015 that provides direct data that we can utilize to justify the current design and be able to explain that in further detail in a grant application to the state. Not only is the town planning to, you know, design this project to the elevation that was recommended in that study, but actually go beyond that, right? Again, that study had recommended an elevation of 10.2 feet. The current design is at elevation 11. Plus, you would emphasize the modularity considered in this design that would allow for additional blocks to be added without having to change the foundations of the wall itself to get up to an elevation that would be pretty close to the FEMA flood line. Though figure that FEMA has right in the middle of Town Pier, they have a two-foot difference in their flood elevation, it actually splits. So, according to FEMA, the flood line on one half of the pier is at elevation 12 at the 100-year storm event, and at the other side is at elevation 14. So, obviously, it's not probably good.
I'm going to stand on the side that's...
Yes, exactly.
We know that FEMA's had some issues in terms of their work.
Okay. So, but the specific question in terms of our eligibility for grants, are we comfortable that we're not precluding ourselves by going with this design? That's what I'm asking.
It does appear that we have a very good case to make that the current design is responsive to the criteria.
With respect to modularity, are the costs of implementing the modularity included in the proposal letter here?
No, they are not.
So, if we want to take advantage, what does that do to the costs?
Eric, just to clarify, the $5.5 million, that includes modularity for that additional block?
Meaning that we can handle it, but does it include that block itself?
It does not include that one quarter block.
Because that would be constructed, added at a future time. We wanted to, what I think the key question was, is the supporting foundation that's been designed sufficient to do it without having to go back and redo the foundations? Because that would be a real waste of money, and that is not the case.
Okay. I mean, just looking at the numbers, by my calculation, the construction costs are up 47% from where we estimated in 2018, and the overall project is about 40%. And to me, I mean, that's something that I've learned about today, and I need to consider that. This is not a, you know, a 5, 8, even 10% change. This is a real significant change. And so, I'm supportive of the project, but I, given these numbers, it's something I really need to consider further.
Mary. Thank you. How much, just to pick up on what Joe's asking about, do we have a sense of how much of that price increase from 2018 to 2020 is like just kind of overall cost escalation?
Versus change in the design?
Right, right. I'm just thinking about, you know, I keep hearing that sort of building projects in general, every year are more expensive. Do we have a sense of how much of that increase is accounted for by rates?
We're concerned that this could bleed over into the schools, and we'd be... We'd feel trouble.
The cost escalation, in our opinion, is not the largest contributor to this.
But is it a meaningful amount?
I would say no.
Okay. At some point, you were sitting here, so you heard I'm a numbers guy, it would be helpful for me to just get a little bit more detail around that $1,270 difference. And I understand that Beals &amp; Thomas was not responsible for putting together the initial estimate, but I think you probably have some work that you've done that's done a comparison, and that would be very helpful if you could provide that to the board, just for us to get our arms around the cost. I had one other question, and that is, with respect to the grants, just hypothetically, let's say that town meeting authorizes this in April. Will we then go ahead and, as we go, apply for grants, or will we wait, apply for the grants, see what happens?
I'm going to analogize, Mary, to the dredging project, which we did last year in very similar circumstances, and we actually included in the warrant article the maximum estimate that we thought might be necessary, but said in the comments, advisory committee carefully worded into the comment, we are applying for money from the state, and we went ahead, approved the full amount, but as we know, ended up at a much lower cost, and in fact, got the largest single grant for dredging from the state for this last year.
Right. So, Bill, just in terms of like the timing of MVP and Seaport Bond Council, you know, how long will we wait to see if we qualify for funding? Like with the dredging, we knew we had to have it. You know, this, to me, in a little bit of a ways, is kind of like foster school. How long do we wait for the MSBA? Has there been any discussion about that?
I'm going to give the answer that I've understood from our conversations over time here. The MVP is a relatively new program. It's only about a year or two old. They're not as rigid and disciplined about their cycle. Eric has made clear to me that kind of when they have money available, they open up an opportunity to apply for grants. There hasn't been one yet in 2020, I don't think, but you had told me earlier that you thought that it would be likely sometime this spring.
Okay.
Maybe May, June, and that their response time, unlike MSBA, is much shorter.
Okay.
So, that you would know, I mean, the intent when we put this plan together to proceed this year with one of the wharfs was have the permitting, the town's approval of a budget that would be sufficient so that if you had to go out, you'd have enough so that your bid wouldn't, you know, your bids wouldn't be... And then we would... bid wouldn't, you know, your bids wouldn't be, and then we would immediately be going to MVP. Seaport Bond Council, slightly different. They're a little more, and whether we could realistically get money from both, I'm not sure, but we probably would want to apply to both.
Absolutely.
And just logistically, if we, so let's just say we start this project.
We would expect to have.
If we start.
An answer with MVP before we.
Okay, so we would get an answer from MVP before we start. That's important to know. And does the town meeting approval for the whole amount, does that, does that affect our standing with these grants? Does it make us more attractive because we've got our share, less attractive because we've basically authorized all of it? And they could say, gosh, Hingham's taken care of this all by itself.
We'll have them come to your meeting or show them this, and they'll know.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about, and again, you know, Bill, you've done a wonderful job in the committee, stepping us all the way on this, but now as we're kind of getting to go time, I just want to make sure that we're not making a decision that jeopardizes our standing for grant funding in any way.
So Eric, I'm going to ask you to answer that, because in terms of how the MVP program, which as I said, is new, and do they have standards? I think Seaport Bond Council perhaps did have standards. They clearly wanted skin in the game from the town, for sure.
Yep.
We are going to have skin in the game no matter what. Even at 4 million, you know, it was going to be up to 2 max, and we would have at least 2. Now, if we were to get the full 2 million, we would have even more than that. So there is that aspect. My sense is showing that the town is committed to doing this because they believe it's important from a resiliency standpoint. And as our MVP thought process went through, that title surge was a major priority for the town. My sense is we'd be in good shape. But I want to look to Eric to answer as well.
So the MVP program does require a minimum 25% match, at a minimum there. And in terms of the Seaport Bond Council, I would absolutely say that we could pursue both simultaneously. I think that was the town engineer's intention at the time. We're prepared to pursue those opportunities. We had not been in direct communication as the designing engineers in that capacity, but can certainly do that moving forward. As well as the MVP program, the state's fiscal year, they've awarded their money for fiscal year 2020. Those funds all have to be expended by June 30th, right? So this project was not going to fall into the 2020 fiscal year. We still have to go through our permitting. Assuming that if we were to move forward, we would expect to have permits by the end of this year. We would be into the 2021 fiscal year for MVP Action Grant Funding. So those funds would become available probably around the end of 2020. We would have to expend those by June 30th of 2021, which I think would dovetail with the construction of this project.
I'm just trying to think, like, you know, if you're the state agency and you've got, you know, a certain amount of money, and you've got two or three times the asks whether a town vote for Hingham for the whole thing, you know, maybe that just made your life easier. Because Hingham has basically said, we're prepared to go it alone. I'm just trying to kind of turn that over in my head a little bit. And while grants are always important, as the project cost increases, I think I'm even more focused on that piece. I don't, I don't know that that's anything we can answer tonight. I, you know, like my colleagues, I appreciate that as this work was completed, we got it right away. I unfortunately was tied up this afternoon and really couldn't give it the careful attention that I should.
So I want to just elaborate a little bit on your theoretical vis-à-vis, you know, any of these state agencies. I think, you know, the decision that's going to be in front of us is if you were to appropriate something less in order to make it, you know, look somehow, I suppose you could appropriate less and say, well, we're not going to do it unless we get the state aid. I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, logically. If you want to position the town so that we conclude this needs to move forward, to put it off a year is going to make it perhaps more costly, won't change the design, then if you, if you don't put enough in so that if you had to go forward alone, you would get bids that would be meaningful, then you wouldn't even probably go out to bid. If you thought, if you, you know, if you, let's say you went in for 3.5 for the town, hoping to get 2 million, and if you didn't get the 2 million, then you don't have a bidable project.
Yeah. And we can't, we can't start something unless it's fully funded. I mean, we just, especially something, yeah. I don't know if there's enough track record, because I realize MVP is somewhat new, but, you know, I don't know if it's even worth looking what other communities have done and how they've done it, just to maybe see kind of how it's worked. I, I think you've received support from the board all the way along on this project. It's clearly, I view it as a, as a public safety issue more than anything. I'm just trying to think about how to execute these last steps in a way that best positions the town to bring some of our state tax dollars, you know, in here working for us, understanding that there are some trade-offs. So, you know, if there's, if you could give that some thought, and if you have anything else to kind of add to that, I'd be interested in hearing it.
Well, the other thing that I, I hope, knowing the capabilities in the town, is that in our discussions with the advisory committee, you also can be creative in terms of thinking about, hey, are there other ways to approach this that will, as you've said, maximize the likelihood that we get the most tax, tax support, state tax support possible?
And also being mindful that as each year goes on, costs will go up. And, you know, we could find ourselves in a situation where the cost escalation is greater than the grant we received, and, you know, there we sort of are. So as we, as we continue to kind of work through this, it would be helpful, I think, if everybody could give that some thought. I don't really have the answer here, but.
No, no. I think it's a, I think it's a critical element.
If I could follow up on Mary's question. So have other communities gotten these grants?
So what we're seeing is that, you know, about 80% of the communities in the state now have become MVP certified. So a lot of the dollars the state had available early on were for towns to go through the MVP planning process. And now that they're doing that, the dollars are shifting to the action grant side. So we are seeing grant amounts, in terms of the latest cycle that came out, were the $10.5 million in action grants. I would say that a significant proportion of those were just for more studies. No actual shovel-ready projects. There were some, in my cursory review of just the titles of them. I feel that the towns that Deerfield, for example, you know, received a half a million dollars, there was one community that received over a million in the latest cycle. Presumably, those would be more for construction-ready projects as opposed to, you know, a half-a-million-dollar study.
I'm just trying to find if there's a model that's out there that's working that we can follow.
I'm just harking back to five years ago, when we did start this conversation. And during one of the visits by our senator, state senator and state representative, there was the discussion about, well, how do you maximize vis-à-vis the state? Big picture. Doesn't matter whether it's Seaport Bond Council or this new program, you know, how do you do this? Well, they urged us, get ready, you know? Get your designs done, get your permitting done, so that opportunistically, when the chance is there, you can present shovel-ready projects, and that's important. I can think about Lieutenant Governor Polito coming down and asking about that. Are you, you know, are you ready to go? It seems to me that philosophically, what the state is asking for is exactly what we've done. That this, this project is fully designed, permits are, you know, by the time the grant applications would be made, will be, will be very close to being, being complete if the schedule, you know, holds up. And I think that positions us, to me, far better than asking money just for the study. We're actually going to do something. And we know that the Lieutenant Governor, for sure, and she's the one who oversees the bond council money, is looking to see, to get it done. And so the fact that our bathhouse, for example, is going to be open this spring with $700,000 of state money will be very helpful in terms of demonstrating this is a town that says it's going to do it and does it.
I agree with that. I had sort of two questions to think about. Hours getting late, we've got folks here to discuss this and other things, so I'm mindful of that. But I know you talked earlier about materials. We made a very particular analysis of the kinds of materials that we wanted to see at the Wharf, but I'm wondering whether, you know, there's, I'm wondering whether that's worth another look at all in terms of cost and how much of a driver that is, the granite is a driver in the cost. And then secondly, the modularity, you know, I, obviously, we, obviously, it's better to build something we can add on to, but for the incremental foot or foot and a half, whatever it is, you know, I guess I'd just like to understand, again, cost as a, as a driver, you know, is it worth that extra foot and a half? You know, what's the, what's the cost benefit?
But let's be clear, I want to make sure everybody understands. What we wanted to be sure, Joe's question was, is the design that we've done sufficient to carry more height without changing the design and without changing cost? If you, and the answer was, when we finally had it all clear, yes. There's an additional foot and a half over and above the four feet that we're adding. You're asking a different question. If we didn't want to pay for the substructure strong enough to hold up that additional foot and a half, how much would we save?
Right.
And my sense is that's not a lot.
That's what I wanted to hear, Bill.
Yeah. Please, please clarify. I mean, we, we were coming very much from, we want this project to have life beyond just 2030.
And we talked about that.
Yes.
We talked about that.
But just to build on that, my understanding is that the real cost would be if we wanted to go beyond that, we'd have to build actually another wall behind. Is that now right?
No. Not for the foot and a half.
No, not, no, not the foot and a half, but go beyond that.
If you go, if you want to be up four or five feet more, then yes.
Yeah, then you need the other wall. Exactly. Okay.
Okay. Did you have anything else?
I just think that the cost going up as it is, it's an appropriate question to ask, just to understand options.
Can I, I'm just, I'm going to share, again, a conversation I had with Eric and Dan in the hallway.
Very quickly.
Very quickly, because I said, look, you know, Duxbury, that's a different type structure, you know, it's not granite. And I was somewhat surprised here, but, you know, the viewer, the picture is in the facts, that per linear foot, there's not that great a difference between what Duxbury is building with concrete and steel and what we are doing using most of the materials that we already have, because we have the stone. If, you want to just confirm that, if you would?
So by linear foot, it's about a 500-foot difference between the reinforced concrete wall with steel sheet piling beneath it that Duxbury's doing. Now, they may have a benefit of scale with there. They're doing 1,000 feet of wall, and you guys are doing half of that, but per unit cost, they're very similar price.
Mary, so I, that's trying to be responsive to you. If you went to a different, or I guess, I'm sorry, if you didn't go with the kind of granite look, which we talked about as being part of the aesthetic conversation, we would have a dramatic reduction upon the cost, and I think the answer is no.
And last point I'll make as well, just as I have it right here, the lifecycle cost for the granite is 85 years versus 45 years for the concrete. So when you look at it on a lifecycle, lifecycle cost basis, we had done that in the chair, the cost comes down dramatically per year.
Okay. Questions from the public with respect to the repair and reconstruction of Town Pier presented this evening? Okay, seeing none. I, like my colleagues, was unable to really fully invest myself in this analysis, so I'm not ready to vote this tonight. I think this information is helpful, the discussion's helpful, and we should be in a position, I would think, to vote this next week.
So can I just, can you just remind me, the warrant ultimately closes on about March what?
So we have to send articles to the moderator from AdCom after AdCom finally.
The 13th, I think, right?
Yeah, our end is around the 13th. We have to send things to the moderator on the 20th, so you're backing up from that.
Okay. So you'd be talking about another meeting with you folks next week?
On Monday.
On Monday, the night.
On Monday. Okay. I'll have to work that, but we'll be responsive to some of the questions that have been asked. And I know advisory is going to, I, I'm going to suggest, would be, that advisory certainly have its conversation this week to start, and then rather than waiting.
It was, since this is tonight, it was scheduled for Thursday night. But it sounds like just with everyone's schedule, we may have to add a meeting next week. Victor was talking about Thursday night. So whether it's Tuesday or Thursday, I think we'd be in a position next week if we do have that extra meeting to vote once the Sleutman vote on Monday. So you think you'd be voting Monday night?
Yeah.
Great.
But I think it might still be worth having more, the more extended conversation that we contemplated this Thursday, but that's for you and Victor to decide. All right. Just to cover a lot of this ground, so that we're not trying to do it all at once as you're trying to vote.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you staying. Okay. This is Real Estate Council for the town here. We have articles GG and HH, discontinuance and disposition of a portion of Old Derby Street.
Oh, have you used the folder?
Oh, I think that's the folder. Yep. I hope we get some more information. Ms. Murphy, how are you this evening?
Good, thank you. You'd provided a lot of great background on this. I think I'm in a position where I understand the design drawings, not as well as my colleague, Mr. Fisher, but well enough to know what I'm voting on. But if you could just maybe briefly take us through the overarching concept here, that'd be helpful.
Do you want to, do you want to put one on the board?
Only on.
No, on that, just for the public? Oh, do you want the bigger one?
Just kind of. Okay. I just.
Would you like me to start?
Yes.
Okay. So the way this article came about, it, article now GG HH, is the Derby Street project, which everyone's very familiar, has to drive through that area of town. One of, one of the improvements that was added into the project in order, for safety purposes, was to install a traffic light where the two spurs of Old Derby Street would meet Derby Street. And since the 1950s, when Derby Street was configured the way it is, those two legs had been off-center from each other. And so it was very dangerous trying to get out of Old Derby Street, particularly if you're trying to make a left turn. So since DOT was looking at improving that corridor, they agreed to include dealing with Old Derby Street as part of the project. It involved a taking of a piece of land, so if people are familiar with the area where Best Chevrolet and Descend to Diamonds are located, it involved taking a piece of land from, what is the Descend to Diamond parcel, in order to line up Old Derby Street. So it's a four-way intersection with a light. The result of that is that you now have the existing right-of-way for Old Derby, as you approach Derby Street, is now a Y. But you can only, to get onto Derby Street, you have to go to the right to the traffic light. It's now blocked off, and you can't go straight through past Best Chevrolet anymore to get onto Derby Street. The town, the portion that leads to the traffic light is now part of the town right-of-way, so it will be maintained by the town, the same as the rest of Old Derby Street, as it leads into Derby Shops. So it left this kind of spur, the left side of the Y, as I've described it, that did not have a lot of purpose for the town. that did not have a lot of purpose for the town. It, it was important and necessary for Best Chevrolet, their owners, to be able to still turn left off of Old Derby to get in. And then, you know, there was, a, a lot of discussion involved Randy Sylvester, the property owners. We also met with the, the town planners and sat down and said, how is this going to affect their parcel? So there was a lot of thought about how to deal with the spur. From DPW's perspective, a road, a dead end that leads to nowhere is not something that, you know, they wanted to have to be responsible for. It would be added costs of maintenance to the town. So, you know, this, this somewhat kind of odd shape of how the discontinuance played out was all taken into account, what does the town need in order to, to maintain appropriate and safe access into Best Chevrolet, but not continue to maintain portions of a road that have no beneficial use to the public. So that's where this plan that you have in front of you, that's how that evolved. There was a number of iterations to it. It, what it results in is there's two portions of Old Derby Street, A and B. One's about 5,500 square feet, the other one about 3,400 square feet, that no longer have any beneficial use to the town as public ways. And so the proposal is to discontinue just portions A and portion B. In addition, the property owners that abut those properties are saying, well, what, you know, talked to Tom, and I participated in those conversations and asked, okay, well, now what will happen to that land if the town discontinues it? They expressed an interest in potentially acquiring it. The town needs to, there's a couple of steps to that. Under both state law and our general bylaw, the Board of Selectmen would need to get authorization from Town Meeting in order for that to happen. You would need to declare those portions of land, if they're discontinued, as surplus. And then we needed to look at the 30B procurement disposition process. And you don't always need to go out for a bid on that land if the value is less than $35,000. So we went through a process that the town has gone through before. For example, when portions of North and Station Street were discontinued. And we worked with the assessor who put together those valuations, which have been provided to the Board of Selectmen. At this, tonight, the Board of Selectmen are not being asked to, you know, vote on actually selling or conveying the land. But the votes before the Board of Selectmen tonight are kind of supporting the final, whether or not you support the final version of the warrant. And then also, because there's an authorization here for you to dispose of the land, to vote that, you know, assuming that, or in the event the Town Meeting votes to discontinue portions A and B, to find that those lands would be surplus. So, I don't know, it's kind of, it's, it's a lot of process for something that doesn't look like a lot on paper. But we've gone through all the steps. The other step is that the Planning Board is required by state law to give its recommendation. This went before the Planning Board. They did recommend in favor of the discontinuance. Sharon has, in the Selectmen's office, the copy of the Mylar Plan signed by the Board of Selectmen, I mean, I'm sorry, by the Planning Board indicated that they have done their review as required by state law, so that step's been completed.
Thank you. Joe?
So once we, once the town votes to discontinue, who is responsible for maintenance of the land?
Well, the, so another step, once you, when you discontinue land, one of the determination that needs to be made in advance, so that's been done, is who owns the underlying fee in land? That review has been done, and there's going to be a, a title opinion provided by Mark Borbeau of Tachio Morgan Firm, John Tachio Morgan. What happened is in 1929, the state, there was a state act that authorized the DOT of the time to lay out this road, and then immediately upon completion of the roadway, it would be deemed to be held in fee by the town of Hingham. So we have a state act that says the town of Hingham owns this. So once it's discontinued, that happens automatically by operation of law as soon as the vote occurs. The town will then own that in fee, so it's the town's land regardless.
We're responsible for it.
And so you're responsible for it, regardless of what happens. And, and so that's why the conversation was talked about. If, if the town does do this, and it doesn't have any public benefit to the town, but there are private parties who are interested in it and will pay the town the valuation as determined by the, by the assessor, then, you know, that, I, I think, you know, Tom has indicated that that might be something that the town, the Selectmen might.
And that analysis is in our papers as well?
Yes.
Yeah.
But the vote here is to discontinue, but not to dispose at this point? Or is it to dispose?
Well, it's, it's, it's to find it surplus, so that then when, if Town Meeting votes to let you dispose of it,
Right.
then you can dispose of it. But you can't, you, you have to, you need the Town Meeting authorization before you can do so.
Got it.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. Susan, thank you for all the diligence on this. Once again, 1929 filed.
Yes.
It's fun stuff.
Questions from the audience on the discontinuance of a portion of Old Derby Street? Seeing none, I would take a motion.
I'll move to recommend favorable action on Article GG HH.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye. And then you have the, another vote on your vote list? And that's, right? And that's the one that?
Surplus.
In the event, you know, Town Meeting votes to authorize, to discontinue.
So it's number one on the vote list?
Yep.
So I would accept a motion to declare the portions of Old Derby Street to be discontinued pursuant to Article GG and HH as surplus property.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Susan.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Article KK, climate action planning. Mr. Moyer's not here. I'm sorry to hear that.
I'm stepping up.
Thank you. You just sat through a discussion on the climate action planning with respect to the Wharf and the resilience.
I, I think a lot of the things are very poignant.
Introduce yourself for the audience.
My name is Michael Reeve, 31 Howland Lane in Hingham. I'm also a member of the Energy Action Committee, was appointed by the Town Moderator. I'm taking Brad Moyer's place up here. He had given me his notes. He apologized, he had to leave, he has a family emergency. And we all send our condolences to Karen.
Oh, thanks very much. Appreciate that.
Sometimes life really is very tough, and I understand.
Thank you.
So there's a lot of people in this room. I am wearing, I'm not quite sure which hat I'm wearing. But I think the things I would like to say represent the citizens of Hingham, my own personal opinions as a scientist, as a member of the general public, homeowner, father, and concerned citizen in terms of where we are with our climate. I think the words "climate crisis" are very poignant right now, and it's something that is coming to a head, and I think we all need to take responsibility. We've worked under the direction of the Board of Selectmen Women on our committee for the last number of months on putting together a document, a warrant article, a plan. I've worked personally all my life since I was at high school, junior high in Scotland, learning about what our climate was going to end up doing to us. And my philosophy is absolutely behind the schools. My philosophy is absolutely behind protecting our resources. And some very interesting discussions and some very smart people standing up, giving some really good explanations. And it's really a pleasure to be in this town at the forefront of the world, because I don't think there's anywhere finer. I really, I really don't. And I want our town to be leaders, and I want to keep our leadership status. And personally, I want to make sure that every kid in Hingham can learn whatever math, science, physics that they want to learn and are motivated to learn and know that there are further places of higher education that they can go to. So we've presented a warrant article that we would like the Board of Selectmen to support. And from my personal perspective, I think the first words in that article that I think are original drafts that we did not have, but actually mean an awful lot, "Will the town not, could the town, should the town, could have, would have, should have, but will the town support?" And I'm not, it's late, I'm not gonna, I'm not even going to read it because I think most people are aware of what it says. But "will this town support putting together a plan to make a plan?" And I, I don't think it matters how we get from A to Z, A to Z. We're at the beginning. We probably should have, could have, would have done a lot beforehand and not be looking at the astronomical figures, right? Had we all done this, you know, when I was a lot younger, shall we say? But tho, those numbers are real. That's what it costs to do that engineering. I would point out, and I did to the engineer, that using granite is much more friendly in terms of a carbon footprint than all the concrete. But I think it's time for us to bring the town into this. And it's time for us to take responsibility and document that in 2020 in April, we made a pledge that we were going to work towards getting to Z. Now, there's been a lot of discussions, there's been a lot of community action, there's been a lot of town action. And I think we know what needs to be done, and I think we know that it's going to cost money. And there's going to be some hard, tough decisions to make. But I think people that move to Hingham, such as myself, people that have been here for many, many, many years and decades, we're here because we care about the town, we care about leading, and we care about doing the right thing. And I think there is a democracy to make that happen. So we had this discussion in a public meeting last night, and there was a split decision. We had quorum, there was a split decision that we would not retract the warrant article as it currently stands, that we would push it forward towards advisory and the Board of Selectmen Women to make their determination. That said, we do not want something to fail. We want to educate and get the message out why we need it not to fail and why we all need to change our, let's call it our behavior and the way we spend our dollars and the things that we support, so that this type of thing in the future doesn't become money not spent because we way under budgeted and now we need a second wall. And you know what? Our planet is no longer sustainable. And we need to make these decisions very, very soon. And I don't just mean people in Hingham, I mean people worldwide. We've seen young school kids from Sweden get up and become very famous, but for the right, but for the right reasons. And we need to lead. We need to step up, and we need to figure out how to do this responsibly, financially, and cost, cost effectively.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, I'd say that you haven't failed, and that.
I'm glad to hear.
You've, the town, your group are leading right now. So it's, the commitment is, is that you've expressed, I think we share. And what we need to figure out is the best way to, to move us forward in a way that brings the town together.
Yep.
So, and that's, I think, what, what the focus is here, what's the best way to proceed?
Yeah, and I, I, you know, and I have some thoughts on that, I don't know if you do. I mean, I, I think that we are, we're in agreement with the concept. We've been in agreement with the concept over these many months. I think that the, the sort of, the challenge is, I think, how, how most efficiently to approach what I think is the next step, which is to be able to formulate some plans with some costs and engage stakeholders, so that when you go to Town Meeting, you can stand up and answer all those questions with all those people standing behind you in support. So I, I mean, I, I don't think there's any disagreement with anything that you've said tonight or any of the good work of the Energy Action Committee. But I've said to, to multiple folks, for an initiative like this, the process to me is, is as important as the content. Because I don't, I don't want this to fail either. And it's one of those things where you get a bite at that apple and you fail with it, it's very, very difficult to bring that back, you know, the next year. And so I, my goal right along has been to try to position this initiative for success. And I, as you know, come at this from a different direction than it is contained in your warrant article. Who's right, who's wrong, I, I don't know. But I, again, my, I, I am, I am with you in substance. I view the process, the most efficient and effective process, to be different than that that you've proposed in the warrant article.
Can you talk a little bit about the process that you, that you're thinking about?
Yeah, so.
I've, I've, you know, Tom has been keeping us all apprised, but it's, sometimes it's helpful to hear directly.
Well, yeah, and I think that, you know, backing up, I think some of the expectation that I know you've been working on as a committee, but that, you know, that has not surfaced back here. And again, no, not pointing any fingers at anyone, it just hasn't. Though I think there were conversations that we were anticipating having together along the way, so that when we formulated this, we would actually formulate this together. And, and, and that didn't happen. And in order, I think, to provide the resources from the town to construct and support a process that actually does draw in stakeholders, folks from Net Zero, folks from the schools, folks from the harbor. You know, Bruce Macaloney was here when we talked about this a while ago. You know, the harbor, as you know, is, is thinking about this and actually trying to put the shovel in the ground to at least stem the effects of what we then would be trying to reduce, right? So I think there are a lot of folks around town that want to be part of this conversation. And I guess my view would be, I'd like to be able to work with the Town Administrator's Office to put together a smaller group than you have outlined here to be more nimble and hopefully more efficient in starting this dialogue more quickly. And frankly, it's not, if we were to construct a task force, doesn't have to wait till Town Meeting. You know, we could do that, we could talk about that this week. And so that would be my, my favorite approach, would be to utilize some of the staff resources in the Town Administrator's Office to create a smaller committee with representatives from the Energy Action Committee, but that would work at the direction of the Town Administrator and that we could line up the tasks similar to those that we talked with the Energy Action Committee and Brad Moyer about, you know, back several months ago. I think to lay out a process that, that the Board of Selectmen believe could lead to success at Town Meeting.
I've also heard some discussion about MAPC resources that, that are available to assist communities. I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering how, how do we best position ourselves to plug into those? Because. those because there's expertise, there's all kinds of benefit to that. I don't, I don't know if anybody, if anybody seated at this table can talk to that.
So I could, so we use MAPC for the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a number of projects. And I think the best way to get their attention is to be prepared when you have the conversation. So I would recommend that we get a group of lodge, of knowledgeable people around a table, put together some understanding of what our ask would be, maybe meet with a staff person at MAPC, understand what their, what their needs would be in terms of an application, get that data put together, apply properly for a grant to has, ask them to help us cobble together a, an appropriate climate action plan.
Or, or maybe more than cobble.
Perhaps.
Mr. Reeve, it sounds like, again, last night that, that your, that the Energy Action Committee had some discussion about whether to go forward with this article or not. Could you just maybe take a minute? I mean, it, so it was a split vote.
Yep.
Those that wanted, I think I'm, I'm hearing the kind of, those that wanna go forward, but I guess I'm interested for those that, that said, let's not go forward with the warrant article, what was their thinking?
I think they're scared of it failing, but I don't think some of the conversations, as you correctly allude to, haven't happened.
Yep.
And I think that's...
Yep.
And I, and I, I see all the points that you're saying, but I, I've also done my own personal research. And yes, there are bodies that are, are going about it, MAPC, for example, but I think there's a consensus that they're not quite there yet. And the, the, the process of a grant and the amount of money that's available is probably only a, a small amount of what, what's needed. I think there's a part of our committee that's saying, this is an emergency. We've got to get started. And I think there's the consensus in this room that we all want to get started.
Yeah.
And it really doesn't matter in, it's semantics, how you break it, how you break it up and how you map it, as long as we're all going in the right direction.
Sure.
And limited resources are being spent effectively and coordinated appropriately. And we've gone through the sort of, the open meeting format and the committee format. One can move really quickly because there's no open meeting laws if it's a subcommittee. And then you report back with deadlines and accountability. And what the people who are supporting the warrant article is saying, there's really not much in this. It's not really that restrictive. There's no dollar amounts per se. But what we're saying is collectively, we as a town have decided in April of 2020 that we want to address this. And we've stated that in the public record.
Mm-hmm.
And there's been open meetings and people have had a chance to stand up and be counted and voted. There was also a gentleman that said, maybe because this was put together quite hurriedly, it didn't have your full review and comment. It was put together in January and now we're March, almost in April. That's a large part of the, the yearly, uh, uh, progress, so to speak, that maybe we should rewrite it and talk about it as an addendum at the, at the public meeting, at our, and say, look, this is where we were then, this is where we are now, and this is our plan. And all the good things that have come out of these meetings from everybody, let's put it down and act on it and put it together. And then in a year's time, come back with
Yeah.
... concrete information scientifically tested and real numbers that then you can make a recommendation on what to do. But our concern as a committee is, and I think the general public as well, is saying we don't want this to go around in circles for another year.
Sure.
And we don't really make very much progress because now is the time, we, we've been elected or assigned
Yep.
... to speak up, take action, and move this ahead because it's a crisis. It's something we can solve.
And I, I, so first of all, I really appreciate the accountability that this committee is feeling towards your charge. I mean, I really sincerely, you know, this is something that matters. You wanna move forward. I think the common ground in this room is there's a shared goal for having a plan. There's a shared desire not to fail. And there's also a shared sense of urgency that, that the longer action is postponed.
The more it's gonna cost.
Absolutely. As I'm thinking about this warrant article and, and I'm, I'm thinking about kind of number two, which is how to make sure we don't fail because a warrant article takes it outside of all of us. It takes it to a town meeting where lots of different things can happen, where we can't, you know, we, we have, it's, it's kind of up to the meeting to decide. There are two things that jump out at me as potentially a risk to getting an affirmative vote at town meeting. The, the first one is specificity on what the plan would be, what the resources might be in terms of time and dollars. And I'm just wondering if maybe town meeting will get hung up on that and say, without those, without that specific information, we don't, we don't know what, you know, we might say no. Which to the point you just made, if we can do some work this year, my, my guess is that at some point, there's, we're gonna have to spend some money on this. If we really wanna make a difference, we're gonna have to spend some money. We're gonna have to have some policies. So, so there will be a day in front of town meeting.
Oh, yes.
The question is, do we wanna go to town meeting and say, how do you kinda feel about this? Or to say, we've done some work, here's the business case, here's what we need, and here are the very specific asks? That feels like it's a more successful path for me. I will also say that I'm, as I'm looking at a committee of, of 11 members, I'm kinda saying, well, on one hand, that's a lot of people, so everybody can jump in and do the work. But having served on a 15-person committee, a big committee is also not without its challenges. And, and I'm, you know, I, I'm sorta not sure about that. And if anyone were to say to me tonight, well, you know, how many members should it be? I don't know enough about the work and the scope to say it should be five, it should be seven. And again, I don't wanna have that conversation on the floor of town meeting. I, I hear the risk and I understand it. You know, if, if, if something gets passed at town meeting, it's basically the citizens of Hingham saying, we want you to do this and move ahead. And it's, it's harder to ignore that. It's harder to push that off.
Yeah.
And I, I, I totally get that.
I mean, that was one of our goals in the way we wrote this was to put something that people would say yes to. And then you could say, we have the weight of the town behind it when you get into the trenches of
Right.
... what it will cost and what needs to be done.
Yeah, and I guess where I'm, where I'm sorta going here is, is I don't think we need town's meeting's approval to kinda take these initial steps.
Right.
And there's part of me that says, I'd rather do that work because I think it will be a more compelling case for town meeting when, when we go to them. And, you know, and I'm just thinking about this as well. So we go to town meeting, it's the end of April, we do talent bank interviews through like May and June, we make appointments in July, everybody's on vacation, and nobody really starts working on committees till September.
Or we put together a task force next week.
And, and so I'm, I'm looking and saying, you know, as, with respect to this urgency, you know, we, we...
Can we do both?
We would kind of have to wait. Well, I think, I think we kinda have to pick because, you know, if, if you're a volunteer committee and they say, well, you know, there's this task force working, I, I don't know that people would wanna volunteer, you know, volunteer for that.
I mean, most of it is volunteers.
Yeah, but I, I would also say that if, and again, I don't, I don't have the expertise that your committee does on this, but I think developing this plan, if we want to do it right, is going to be a heavy lift. And, um, I wanna, I wanna kinda put the right, the right resources at it. So, you know, I'm with you on the goal, I'm with you on the urgency, I'm with you on the not failing.
Good.
And I think where I'm sorta starting to come out is, I, I think if Article KK goes through as is, um, I think that there's a potential that it could fail. And I think what you're, you know, hearing from this board is that we would be prepared to, you know, initiate this work. And I, I do think staff is a good idea because they have access to resources and people and, and, and other things. That, that feels like a better path to me.
Well, is there a way to, to bifurcate this? Because one part of what I, how I read the article is a declaration, that this is where the town is at, this is where the people are at, and we are committed to this goal. And then there's a second part is the task force and developing plans. And I'm thinking of a declaration, the first part.
So we, we have not, we have not been that town. That's not to say we, we can't be.
Right.
But we have not been, you know, I know Concord sometimes will do that. That is not what we have done. So we, we do the business of the meeting that the, that the meeting legislates. So, you know, I think if, if that's something you wanna, you wanna explore, I do think we'd need to talk with the moderator about it because it's not, it's not something that has been entertained by Hingham Town Meeting to date. And I, you know, I, I don't know. I, I hear you that, I hear you about the, the symbolism of taking a stand. I think, you know, being on TV by the Board of Selectmen designating resources, limited resources to this task, you know, soon, immediately, is a pretty big declaration by your town government that this is an important initiative, so.
I think there are different ways that we could make a declaration. Again, I, um, and I, you know, I'm thinking about like the compressor station, right? I think we adopted some sort of a declaration that preceded, you know, our efforts to partner with Waymoth on, on the litigation.
So, Selectman Johnson, if you don't mind. So I was, had the privilege of joining the Energy Action Committee at a meeting three weeks ago or so where this conversation was had. I think one of the things I heard from, from some of the discussion in the room was if a more, if a more thorough approach was taken to a future town meeting wa- article, warrant article, I think one of the benefits that you would realize from that is building consensus in the meeting, not just winning the vote. And then the subsequent effort going forward is the town more as a whole, rather than 51% for instance of the town backing the issue. I, I think that was, that was a piece of the conversation that was had.
Yeah, that's a really good point.
I just wanted to throw that out there.
No, that's a really good point. Because I think this is more than winning the vote. Like this is an engagement across the town to, 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 to your point, right? To get everybody on this page that we absolutely need to take these actions. And it's gonna cost us some money. Like we, we've gotta invest in this
Yep.
... and invest in our collective future. But I think it's, to me, I think we, we need to build that case. And, you know, I, I think that, again, I don't pretend to be an expert in this content, but I've been involved in town government for a long time. And the process piece, as I said it sort of at the outset, I think sometimes that's as important as the content. And in this, in this particular case, because it's not just getting it over the line, it's getting everybody to pull the oar, I think that's, that's a, that's a really important conversation to have with every stakeholder group, you know, with everybody who's gonna touch this so that when we do go to town meeting, we're rising up all together to participate in this. Because that's what it's gonna take, I think, for this to, to be successful. And I, and I don't mean this warrant article, I mean our initiative to get to net zero. So, you know, I, I, I think, I think we can move on this more quickly.
Yeah.
We can identify the expertise that we need. We will have a home, a staff home for it. Because as you pointed out, we ask a lot of our volunteers and sometimes, you know, sometimes you need more than that. And I think this is one of those times that we need more than that.
Let me add one other thing that I, I just thought of. The, once you form a committee in town meeting, only a vote of town meeting can change that committee. And I will tell you, so last year with the customer advisory board
Yes.
... for the water company, we said, you know, five citizens and this is what they're gonna do. And Hull said, wait a minute, wait a minute, can we have one more seat? And we said, well, that's a good idea. We have to go back to town meeting. And so that means that if you wanna make a change to the charge or to the composition, every change you make has to go through town meeting. I think it's a good idea to avoid that where possible on something like this because it's...
It's gonna evolve.
It's gonna evolve. We don't know, we, we may say in six months, forget 11 people, we need 15. Or we can't get a quorum at 11, so this needs to be seven. We will be hamstrung by waiting for town meeting. And then we will have to convince town meeting, well, we, we, we said X and now we'd like to do Y. I, I feel like that would be limiting as we're, as we're still trying to get our arms around the scope and the effort and how to shape this work.
We may end up wanting to form subcommittees on particular pieces of this. Like you, you, you know, you go off and work with the harbor, you know, you go off and work with the planning board to make sure that the building codes and
Yeah.
... you know, the bylaws in town line up with what our, what our ultimate goal is. You go work with the light plant because, you know, we need to get our light plant lined up with these, all of these common goals.
Or need particular expertise. Like, you know, you've laid out Energy Action, Selectmen, School Committee, HMLP, but there may, there may be another committee that we wanna have represented in this. We'd have to go back to town meeting to, to switch that out. We, anything that town meeting votes or authorizes, because they are the legislative body, they are the only body that can change it. We couldn't change it if we wanted to.
So, again, I mean, I, I, I am with you all the way on this with the exception of your process approach. And I would advocate for a task force, again, to be run through the Board of Selectmen's Office to provide both citizen expertise as well as, as well as staff support for this initiative with the goal of coming back, you know, being able to come and meet with us in the fall and give us an update on your progress and, you know, incrementally meet so that when we get to next January, we're all on the same page with the warrant article that's gonna go to town meeting. And I think that, you know, I think that the task force approach gets its transparency through its report back to the Board of Selectmen. So any ta- any sort of staff-driven task force would need to come here before it goes anywhere else. So that we've got a working group and we've, we have, just so you know, we've checked with town council on this approach. We've got a working group that'll do its work and the reporting will come out through, through the town administrator and, and the members of the committee to the Board of Selectmen. So again, it's all, it's all public work. It'll be all your information, but it's just kind of the nuance of the way that gets accomplished. So, you know, I, it, no shock to you, I, my view is I'm gonna vote no action with respect to the warrant article as it's presented to me, but I will, I, I will move, and I don't know whether we need to vote on this to, for you to form a, and, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna create a public body
Right.
... with a vote, but I want a clear understanding that my expectation would be that you would form that task force, so.
Would the task force be subject to open meeting law?
No, that's the point.
Okay.
So because it's a staff-driven, so it's like, you know, Tom's reaching out to individuals in the community for support to move forward on an initiative that's important to the Board of Selectmen.
Right. And can you allude to what kind of resources you think you'd be in a position to appropriate?
Uh, well, at this stage of the game, it would be, you know, planning resources that would be essentially staff-driven. It would be identifying, you know, you, you don't seem to think it, maybe the resources are there, but it might be identifying grant opportunities. There's no, there's no appropriation. There's no appropriation in your article, nor is there a particular cash amount that would be dedicated to this committee. It would be within the budget of the Town Administrator's Office. But, but the idea would be in the next go-around, it would be, you know, I think it would be likely we would be asking town meeting for
No, no question.
For cash.
No question.
Right. So, that's my view.
So, just in, just to recap some of the conversations... So, just in, just to recap some conversations I had with Brad Moore.
Sure.
A way about that, the idea of the task force and what that might look like. I see it in a, in a couple of different ways, or a couple of different forms. One is the, it's gonna be in large part, like, we were talking about having some knowledgeable folks from some different aspects of the community, whether it's the Energy Action Committee, or the Clean and Green of Hingham has expressed an interest in participating in the conversation, and some of the other boards that Mary mentioned earlier. And I think that there's a lot of work that can be done, similar in large part to the way Michelle managed the green communities application last year.
Right.
With the Energy Action Committee. And the work that was done in large part by the volunteers on the, on the, on the committee, managed by the staff and with the data provided, the data needed for the, for the planning effort provided by staff along the way. I think that's, I think that would be how I would envision that task force.
That, that was a hugely successful effort.
Yeah.
Very successful.
And if you come to town meeting and vote for our procurement officer and our GIS coordinator, it frees her up.
Good point. Good point.
It does.
Any further comments, Joe?
I'd hate for there to be a sense that there's not an urgency here. And you're not hearing that from the board. I think there, there is clearly urgency, and we're trying to figure out the best way to move this forward.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I, I think I would be inclined to, to join Karen in a no-action vote, but this is, my no-action vote is, I don't feel comfortable doing it this way, but I'd like to do it a different way. So, minus, minus process, not so much the importance of the issue.
So, we got a lot of people in the room tonight, so I don't know if anybody would, would like to make any comments. Yes, sir. If you could come to that microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Elliot Place, 901 Kimball Beach Road. I've been to three of the Energy Action Committee meetings and have been engaged in this effort for many years. And my concern is the urgency, as mentioned by you, Joe, and the impetus of driving this. And that is why we created this warrant. And, you know, it, it is composed of two parts, the declaration and then how to create the committee. And I believe it's possible to separate those issues. I think an advisory committee could adjust the membership of it. But, in any case, my concern is, whatever group is undertaking this, what is going to be the incentive and the impetus to really move forward on this? And I'm very concerned that a task force would just kinda go along.
Well, let me give you a couple of examples.
Okay.
Tom mentioned green communities. It was a priority for us and for the second floor planning staff. We just put together another task force, Mr. Estes is in the audience, to look at our fields and athletic facilities. So, there's an identified need. You gotta bring some time and talent to it, and the question is how best to do it. And so I think you're hearing from these three selectmen that we view this as a priority for the town. You know, let me just say, we're very stingy with our staff resources, so the fact that we seem to be on the same page to suggest that that needs to be a priority for the staff in the Board of Selectmen's office show, you know, should be, should be a demonstration of our, our support and, and, and impetus, I think, for the project. So, it's not lip service, I guess, is what I'm trying to tell you.
Okay.
And we, you know, we have undertaken other projects in this way, just for the reasons you've been stating, which is, let's get after it. Let's figure it out and let's get after it. And, and again, I don't disagree with the content. I think the, I, you know, I think the best way to get after it is a, is a, is the task force approach.
So, I hear what you're saying. On the other hand, I have also heard that there's been a lack of responsiveness from the Board of Selectmen to this committee.
Okay, you know what? We are not gonna go there.
Okay.
Because I got my list here, too.
I understand.
And so, no, no, let me finish, please. I think that it's important to move forward with this process and not really revisit that sort of finger pointing.
Okay.
So, I, I appreciate the comments, but I'm not gonna entertain those.
Okay.
Mary, did you?
But, anyway, I'm just wanting to respect what you said, which is the accountability there. And I think that it's very important that we do move forward with that, with whatever task force or committee, you know, is set up.
Appreciate that.
And actually, Mr. Placent, thank you. We did get a, a letter from you. You know, I actually think that there's greater accountability if it's a task force to this board, because right now, Article KK, the accountability is to town meeting. And it actually, it says, "The warrant article does not contain a deadline as to when the cap is to be final." You know, if we're dedicating staff time and doing things, I would envision that, you know, on a, on a periodic basis, maybe it's once a quarter, we're sitting down with this task force, and they're coming in here on the cameras, not filing a report that goes to town meeting once a year, but saying, "What have you done? Where are you? What are your next steps and what's happening?" So, I would actually say that I think the approach we're proposing provides greater accountability, because I think when you're kind of accountable to town meeting, nobody's gonna stand up at town meeting and say, you know, "Where's this that's going on?"
There's nobody, there's nobody on the ground shepherding the project. And in, with this approach, there will be.
Okay. I, I'm grateful to hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Any further public comment with respect to this Article KK? Ms. Burns?
Laura Burns, 479 Main Street. I wanted to mention three things, and I hope I remember what they are. The first is, I would just say, going forward, the reason the Energy Action Committee couldn't just take this thing on and just do it, is because it's a town meeting committee, and its charge is limited to activities of the municipality.
There you go.
So, that's what its charge is. So just keep that in mind when you are forming your, I don't know how you're gonna manage that, but go ahead and figure that out. I just, I do wanna say, though, that the committee did a good deal of research when it, with other towns that have done processes like this. And one of the things that they brought back was that a tremendous amount of public community support is needed to carry out a project like this, because it's enormous. And there are, I've been astonished at the number of people who have been kind of dropping out of the sky with expertise and enthusiasm and, and anxiety, wanting to participate. Hingham Net Zero has 70 people on our email list now, and these are all people who wanna help. So I would strongly, strongly encourage you to conduct the meetings of your task force in accordance with the open meeting law. Because if this goes underground, then you're gonna lose that connection with the people in the community who really wanna participate, and they're gonna be frustrated. And I don't think there's any reason not to, just post the meeting. And we'll tell people, and if they wanna come, they wanna come. But I'm talking about even the, the nitty-gritty spreadsheet stuff. There are resources in the community that you can use to help accomplish these things that hopefully you would be able to engage. So don't take it behind closed doors and say, "Come back in six months," because you're gonna lose that public impetus that's behind that.
Thank you.
And so also, I bring to you a message which wasn't actually sent, but I'm bringing it anyway, from another continent. The Hingham Municipal Light Plant is currently having a, a many months-long discussion about its current policy, which is to, to retire all of its renewable energy credits that it owns for renewable energy that it's, that it's using, and then to purchase credits to cover the carbon emissions part of their portfolio. And there's a fascinating and valuable discussion going on there about, is that the best way to contribute to reducing carbon emissions? And there's several different very strong opinions on the board, and they haven't decided what to do. But what's interesting to me is that everyone on the board seems to feel that the three quarters of a million dollars that they have mentally allocated to spend this year on buying credits, that's money that they want to spend on contributing to reducing carbon emissions, and what is the best way to do that? And so, they're still discussing this, but at their last meeting, the plant manager was tasked with coming up with a plan for how could we use these funds that we have available to possibly, rather than greening the portfolio of the light plant right now, instead, for now, funding the town's process of coming to, coming to a plan for what we could do. It's just an idea, they haven't decided to do that, but I recommend you pick up the phone and ask them if there might be some.
I've actually had a couple of conversations with the member of the light board about that. So, the board's aware of, and the town administrator is, is aware that HMLP is having those conversations.
And so I, my, my, my concern about their, their approach is that I'm, I'm worried that they will come back with an idea for an alternative way to spend this money that won't have the big vision that we're envisioning here, that won't in, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Pick up the phone.
Thank you.
Any further questions with respect to Article KK? Okay, seeing none. I would entertain a motion, if anyone wants to make it, or I'm happy to make it.
Make a motion for no action on Article KK.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much for being here tonight.
So we have a couple other, a couple other votes to take tonight. We've got a couple of one-day liquor licenses. All good, all good on the liquor licenses, Chief?
Glenn? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Thank you.
Thanks.
That's why Ray Estes is here.
Chief, are we all, all good on the liquor licenses?
Yes, we are.
You okay with Ray Estes on this?
I'm okay with Ray, yeah, yeah.
I think it was a close call.
My biggest, I was just discussing with in the back, the biggest concern I always have is parking. But since they'll be running the whole movie theater, that leaves a parking problem that we would normally have down there, so. There's no issues.
Okay.
Can we move on?
Sure, that'd be great.
I move to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Ray Madestes on behalf of Hingham Sports Partnership, Inc., for Comedy Night 2020, to be held at Loring Theater on March 22nd, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is my birthday, by the way, so.
Yeah.
Yes. I'll look for the cake.
On stage? Containing onstage?
Thanks, Ray. And then the next one's good as well?
Yes, the next one's good as well. It's at the Ames Chapel. It's an art fundraiser for African-type art, nonprofit fundraiser, and I've contacted everybody, and we're all settled.
Great. I would entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Lori Lerner for the Malawi Art Fundraiser to be held at Ames Chapel on March 28th, 2020, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that concludes our vote list. Right?
Thanks.
That concludes our vote list, so we will move to appointments. Do we have any appointments this evening?
Not tonight.
Okay. Town Administrator and Selectmen reports, Michelle?
Nothing, thank you.
Tom?
I do. I'd like to read an advisory from our Board of Health for the public's benefit, so, and I'm just gonna simply read what I was, what I was prepared, because I think it's informative the way it's written. The Hingham Health Department is in daily communication with Massachusetts Department of Public Health as we continue to monitor the coronavirus diseased 2019, otherwise known as COVID-19. We follow the direction of the MDPH and CDC on all public health recommendations. The Health Department monitors all communicable diseases through a secure web-based disease surveillance system. This system enables state and local health departments to respond to cases in real time and conduct an appropriate response 24/7. At this time, our risk for COVID-19 in Massachusetts is low. There is currently no vaccine to prevent coronavirus diseased 2019, COVID-19. The best way to prevent illness is to avoid being exposed to this virus. However, as a, as a reminder, CDC always recommends everyday preventative actions to help prevent the spread of respiratory diseases, including: avoid close contact with people who are sick; avoid touching your eyes, nose, or mouth; stay home when you are sick; cover your cough or sneeze; clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces using a regular household cleaning spray or wipe; wash your hands often with soap and water for at least 20 seconds; if soap and water are not readily available, use an alcohol-based hand sanitizer with at least 60% alcohol; always wash hands with soap and water if hands are visibly dirty; if you do have any symptoms such as fever, cough, and shortness of breath, call ahead before you go to the doctor's office or emergency room. Tell them about your recent travel and your symptoms. The CDC does not recommend that people who are well wear a face mask to protect themselves from respiratory diseases, including COVID-19. Face masks should be used by people who show symptoms of COVID-19 to help prevent the spread of the disease to others. The use of face masks is also crucial for health workers who, and people who are taking care of someone in closed settings, at home or in a healthcare facility. The Hingham Public Schools clean schools three times a week, plus Saturdays, using a Victory electrostatic gun with a non-toxic solution that kills influenza, norovirus, and other viruses. The buses are also cleaned regularly with this product. Lastly, if you have small children, please be aware of the news that you are watching. It may be helpful to turn off the TV and radio and have a conversation about handwashing and how to stay healthy. This is a rapidly changing public health situation. Please call the Hingham Health Department at 781-741-1466 with any questions or concerns. The Hingham Health Department is advising that residents stay informed by visiting the Hingham Health Department website with links to DPH and CDC. So like I said, I'd rather not expound on that. I think it says it well. It's a thorough, well-written correspondence, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Joe?
No.
Mary?
I just, you know, I've been thinking about this meeting and conversation that we've all just had, and, you know, I think, as we've had big initiatives in the town, you know, different things have happened. I think where, where we've been successful in a town, whether it's building a new school or the high school fields, is when we kinda brought the whole town along, when we convinced everybody that it was kinda the right thing to do, we heard everybody's issues, we were sensitive to things, you know, we made adjustments. And, and also, it, it kinda started with the policy boards and, and our advisory committee partners being in alignment. I'm sorta getting the sense that there's a little bit of a movement afoot to just jam town meeting with people who think one way and kinda jam something through. And while I think the intention is good, I, I don't think that's what's made us successful, and I, I worry about what it kinda does to our institution. I think when we've been thoughtful and we've laid things out and said, "How do we bring the community along?", that's when it works. And I, I'm just, I'm, I'm feeling like there's some, some things that are kinda shifting that, I don't know, I kinda feel like having sat in some of these seats for as long as I have, I, I feel, I feel kinda like part of my job is to kinda protect the fabric of what, what makes all this work. And I think while sometimes things take longer in Hingham, we, we get to the right place. And I, I hope that as we close the budget, that we can all kinda march into town meeting together.
One, it was making me aware of just the whole, the interconnectedness of all of the decisions that we make with respect to the budget and how that affects the next decision and the next decision. So, you know, our ability to, to access the capital markets at the interest rates we can access them at means that we can accomplish some of these capital projects in a way that's, that's not three times as much for our taxpayers. And the reason we can do that is because we've made all these difficult decisions that lead up to this. So, I, I feel, I feel like if you change one So, I feel like if you change one piece of this, the domino effect of that across the town operations, I mean, I think it goes to what you said earlier about the credit rating agencies, they're not just looking at a particular number, they're looking at the overall stewardship of the town of Hingham. And I think that's part of what we have to bring to the table, is that level of integrity when we are analyzing the decisions that are before us.
It's kind of like a ship, you know? If you want to kind of take a 90-degree turn, you don't just kind of go like this. You find a point in the horizon, you kind of adjust. That's what the rating agencies look for, and the stability and predictability of Hingham is one reason we are that AAA.
Well, and I think for this last discussion we had, when we talked about, like, winning versus success, and I think that's the, maybe, that's one way to express it. Like, okay, maybe you're successful, but, I mean, maybe you win, but the ultimate success for this is really community-based.
Yeah.
And I think it's a lot of hard work.
Yeah. We've been successful in Hingham, and I like to do things to be successful.
Yeah, I think the key is communication, to make sure that we are talking to the various constituencies, so that they see the pieces of the puzzle, and not just the one piece that's before them.
Yeah.
And that, I think, we accomplished tonight, and it's an ongoing task for us.
Right, right. Anything else?
No, thank you. My one thing was just, like many of you, I voted today. I voted up at the middle school, and I just really wanted to congratulate the town clerk's office, Alema Kraken and her staff, as well as the multitude of volunteers that come out to make the election so seamless in Hingham. You know, I hope folks got out there to vote today. And, again, thank you to the town clerk's office for making it such a positive experience, and thank you to the schools, I think, for putting up with that disruption in your school day, but an important thing for us to be able to offer in the organized fashion that we do.
I'm sure it was not a big sacrifice for the students to miss a day in class.
Especially today. What a beautiful day, right? Exactly. I don't have anything further. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So, vote.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, thanks for watching.